Order the City of McMinnville work session this evening on Wednesday, August 19th, 2020. And so with calling the meeting to order, I'll call on Claudia to do a roll call.
Counselor Drapkin? Counselor Geary?
Hello?
Counselor Stassen?
Here.
Counselor Peralta?
Here.
Council President Minky?
President.
Counselor Garvin is out this evening, and Mayor Hill?
I'm here. Thank you, Claudia, and thanks to everyone that is on the line with us tonight. We have two presentations and discussions this evening that we're going to be talking about. The first on the urban growth boundary, the UGB remand response, and an update from Heather and the Planning Department on that. And then secondly, we're going to have a presentation on the rental housing maintenance program. That was brought up a number of months ago, and we asked the Planning Department to come back and so that we could have more discussion. This evening, I'm just gonna again remember the Robert's Rules of Order and wait to be called on so that we can respect one another in asking questions and getting our thoughts out. And I know that when Heather shares her screen, that everyone will go to the side. I won't be able to see everyone, so we can help one another just to be aware. But again, I just remind us of that. So with that being said, I would, we could start our discussion on the UGB, and Heather, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, so good evening, Mayor and councilors. Wanted to, we're gonna talk about the UGB remand response, bring you an update on where we're at on that tonight, and get some direction from you. Before I share my screen, because I can't see anyone once I do that, I just wanted to let you know that our planning team is with us tonight, so Tom Shower, Chuck Darnell, and Jamie Fleckenstein are here. DJ Heffernan is gonna be tag teaming the presentation with me. He's the project manager for this effort for us. And then Spencer Parsons is our legal counsel, and he's with us this evening as well. I think Kevin Young just joined us from DLCD. He is our regional representative now for this process, since Angela has left, so he has joined us too. So that's your team here to sort of help answer any questions you have as we go through this. And I'm gonna share my screen now.
Also, the Planning Department's COVID beards and hairs are looking really good, guys. And it's just... Spencer, Spencer, that's really, that's getting there, man.
So, growing McMinnville mindfully, I'd just, I'd like to remind everyone that is the project that we're undertaking, and this is intended to be mindful and intentional. We are responding to the LCDC remand to the City of McMinnville that we received in 2012. It was for our McMinnville Growth Management Urbanization Plan, for how to plan for growth for the planning horizon of 2003 to 2023. It was first submitted in 2003. It was modified in 2005, and then it went to the Court of Appeals in 2006 and '07 and got remanded back to us in 2012. Again, remind everyone, we're actually talking about people and not just data and acreage and housing units. It's people and how they're going to live in McMinnville in the future. Sometimes we forget about the urban planning piece of all of this, which is planning for good quality communities for our, for our future residents. The court's decision itself, again, it was one assignment of error. It's a fairly large one in terms of the work that needs to go into it, but the courts decided that the city erred in its application of ORS 197.298, and that a correct application of the law could compel a different result. The court directed us to determine the land that's needed, so the steps we need to take. Determine the land that's needed, refine the study area, identify buildable land in the study area, apply ORS 197.298 in terms of land selection, and that's the priority screen, screening that we've talked about in terms of different lands to look at first, and then evaluate that land per Goal 14 location factors. Tonight, what we're gonna talk about is some final decision-making we need in terms of the need discussion. So we have two decisions in front of us. How to deal with the exception lands and capacity on them that are inside the UGB that came in what I call Phase One of this effort. And then how to deal with affordable housing. And then we have the second part of the work session. We'll talk about decisions we need to make relative to defining what's buildable land and what's not. We're gonna walk you through a serviceability analysis that was recently completed. We're gonna talk about the Grand Haven Conservation Easement, which is the Shedwin Farms Conservation Easement, and we're gonna talk about hazards. In terms of the determination of need, we are using the Housing Needs Analysis and Buildable Lands Inventory that's in the public record for the remand. So that's the Housing Needs Analysis that was adopted in 2001, and that's the document in which we're using to determine need. It does have a 20-year planning horizon of 2003 to 2023. The population forecast for that horizon is 44,055 people. Persons per household that we use for the calculation of housing units is 2 and 1/2 people per housing unit, and the number of new housing units that came out of that analysis is 6,014. So that's all sort of the baseline data points from the determination of need. In the MGMUP, there was a forecast of need in new dwelling, dwelling units and need by type. And what I wanted to point out to you, because we're gonna talk a little bit about this tonight, is the manufactured home amounts that are here, so manufactured homes in subdivisions and manufactured homes in parks. The overall assignment of new housing units for, out of the 6,000, there was 1,200 allocated to manufactured homes at that time, which is quite a bit, actually. Then the MGMUP then took the housing type and took it a little bit further and assigned the different housing types to different zones that we have in the City of McMinnville. R5 was a proposed zone to move forward at that time, and then assigned a number of gross acre needs to achieve that type of housing in those different zones. So that's, those are some of the numbers we're working with as well. What that did was it yielded a gross buildable acres that we were looking for in terms of need outside the UGB. So all these things you see itemized here in terms of new housing, group quarters, parks, schools, private schools, religious acreage, government, and infrastructure, that all falls into what we call our residential need category, and there was about 1,035. These numbers are all approximate numbers at this point in time. That determination of need, it was also included 110 commercial land acres, too.
Heather? Counselor Drapkin has a question.
Thank you. I'm going back, this is a question I'm actually just hoping you can address in terms of answering this as a question that I've received some, which is based on the fact that we've done a new housing needs analysis, but knowing that that's not, you know, through its process yet, can you just briefly address why we're using the 2001 Housing Needs Analysis instead of the most recently conducted one in that timeframe, and what our limitations and abilities are based on available timeframe?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So our existing Housing Needs Analysis took about five years to get through the system to acknowledgement, and what that means is, we can put together the data and the product, but we also need to vet it through a public process. It can be challenged at different times through that public process in terms of assumptions and data used and things like that. And then we, and that's locally, so there's a planning commission, public hearing process, and then it's adopted by city council, and then we submit it to the state for acknowledgement, and it can be challenged at the state level, too. We haven't done any of that. So the only thing that we've done thus far with the new, with the new evaluation and process that we started in 2018 was drafting the study, the staff document. So we've drafted a staff document that still needs to be refined. We use a project advisory committee to help us do that work. But it hasn't gone through any vetting in terms of a public process. It hasn't been approved by the city council, nor has it been acknowledged by the state. So it's not a legal document one, so it's not something we can use. However, we're also working on this remand project, which is all based on a public record that was established for this project, and we're, and when you, when it's, the project's been established and gone through the court system and remanded back to us, we need to use the record that was established as part of the project. And so that's why we're using the 2001 study. But ironically, it's the only legal study that we have at the City of McMinnville right now anyways, even, even at this time. Does that help?
Sorry, the existing, you said existing one. You're talking about the one that's data we're looking at or the one that we're endeavoring to do now?
So we're not, we haven't done one now, that's what I'm saying. We staff put together a draft product with the thought that we would do an urban reserve area UGB process, as we had discussed earlier, two to three years ago. And then when we didn't get support from DLCD to move forward with that option, city council directed us to do the UGB remand. That effort, that initial draft that we put together for Housing Needs Analysis in 2018 has not gone through any sort of legal adoption process. So it is essentially a staff draft document. So we can't use it, even if we wanted to. With that said, we also need to work within the record of the remand. So we're in what's called periodic review, which started in 1994 with this effort. And as you work through periodic review and different tasks get approved by the state, that task is then memorialized, you're done, and you need to use that moving forward for the rest of the work. And so this 2001 HNA serves, has two different purposes. One, it's our only legally adopted HNA. It's our most recent one that we have as the City of McMinnville. And two, it is the approved task for the periodic review for this effort.
Heather, I have a question on Table 12. Going down under government, I see that there's a need for .9 acres. And as we're looking forward and trying to put together a 20-year plan, we know that in the future, we're going to be looking at some type of consolidation and bringing government together. And we're gonna need some land for that. When we do that process, then do we take the existing land that has government buildings like the community center, the swimming pool, you know, we've talked about a fire station? Does that then get moved back into other type of zoning that would not be classified as government?
So I guess there's two answers there. And, and what you're struggling with as a team is what we struggle with as a team, too, is wearing two different hats. So this remand response, you're really in the hat of, you know, what's happened in the public record and what was put together for, for this MGMUP in 2003. And then we're also talking about, you know, existing conditions today. So to your point, Mayor, the community center and the aquatic center and those types of many's are, would be included in this parks.
Okay.
Bridge right here, and would be part, and this park acreage is part of the future parks master planning process that will be undertaken after this process is concluded. You then do the master plan for the parks in that expanded area. So that's, that's where that discussion would take place. In terms of government, if there was need for, for vacating some property to add other, you know, vacating some property and moving to another site in town, that's not additive, that's just transference, right, of government land to another site.
So we're looking at net as compared?
Yeah, thank you. That's a much easier way to say it than what I said.
Any other questions at this point? You don't hear, so let's go ahead. Thank you, Heather.
And what I'm just trying to do is illustrate sort of ballpark numbers. These numbers are changing because the, and we'll walk through why that is, because the housing discussion is moving around a little bit, because that's not just gross acreage. That's, we're looking at how we assign it and how we develop it. But it's giving you some sort of, you know, perspective of what we're talking about in terms of the expansion project. And keep in mind, these are numbers that were calculated prior to the Phase One lands coming into the city. And now, my, okay, there we go. So in 2006, we did a little bit of amendment to those numbers. We went back and refined some of them, and it came out at about 11:25, but still fairly close to the 11:40. So this is our study area map, our soils map, and I'd just like to remind people of what we're looking at, especially when our assignment of error was the allocation of need to the different priority structures, soils. So red is class one soils, orange is class two, yellow is class three, and then class four to eight, we've sort of aggregated as green. But it shows that we're mostly surrounded by class one and two soils and some three in there as well. So that's, that's the crux of what we're dealing with, is high-value farmland surrounding the city. This shows how we've divided that farm, that study area, the study areas that we created for this effort, and how they've been divided into different quadrants for us to study. And then it also shows where we have high-value farmland in terms of higher-quality farmlands, class one and two, that's the red areas. And then the yellow areas are what we call lower-quality, high-value farmland, so where we would look first. And then the green is exception areas. So what we will do as we continue, whoops, as we continue through this effort, what we're going, I'm sorry, I'm gonna switch my computers, okay. As we continue through this effort, these reds and yellows are gonna get more refined because we have different, we have more than one class of soil in them, but it's helping us look at it from a big 30,000-foot level, and then we'll continue to refine and go down to lower levels of data.
Heather, Counselor Drapkin has a question.
I'm sorry if I'm rushing this, this might come up in your presentation. I kind of realized that too late after raising my hand, but I just was hoping that when you're talking about the lands we're surrounded by, that you'll also touch upon the lands that McMinnville is currently built upon.
Yes, a little bit. I'm gonna talk about it from a hazard perspective, but not in terms of size and things of that nature at this point in time.
Okay, but the, the types of land that the current city is built upon is specifically the information that I'm wanting to call out.
Okay, so, and the city is currently built on high-value farmland?
Thank you.
So this, I think this is where you're getting at, Counselor Drapkin, is the city originally was formed and built on high-value farmland. The reason for that is the person, you know, William Newby, found great land to start plotting out the new city and to, you know, farm. And that, and we're also surrounded by it as well. There we go, sorry. Just to get back to how we got to our study areas, we had to revise the original study area that was submitted in 2003 to add some land up in here to explore a little bit further that we hadn't explored. The court told us that was a direction that we needed to go in, and so we added that to our study areas. We then also removed what we called natural barriers, so the waterways all served as a natural barrier for future development across them without bridge crossings. And so we removed those along the way. What we didn't do right here, you see, is a, what we delineated and sort of shaded out a little bit, is a barrier for steep slopes, and we're gonna talk to you about that tonight and get some direction from you. But the rest of them, we got direction at the last meeting and removed all, all those barriers, which then clipped us to this type of study area. And then we added some land over in here just to do our best faith effort. This is an exception area up in this area up here, and this is a one-mile radius that we committed to looking at for this whole project, so we decided to add that back in. So to put this in perspective, the total study area acreage is approximately 3,600 acres. We don't need 3,600 acres. So oftentimes, when we're talking about the study areas and making decisions about removal or adding, it can be concerning because it looks like we are removing from the study area land that we, that could potential, could potentially be future land to be developed. But in the grand scheme of things, we need to start weeding it down because it's, it's a much bigger study area than we have in terms of need. So we start making these refinement decisions, and that's what we did with you at the last work session, and we want to do with you tonight. We talk about it in terms of gross acres, and then we also talk about it in terms of gross buildable acres. And what that, and the gross buildable acres within the study area now is about 2,700 gross buildable acres. And the numbers I showed you in terms of need, that's gross buildable acres as well. So we looked at 1,100 acres of gross buildable need, and the study area is about 2,700. The reason why the gross buildable is less than the gross acres in total is because there is land within these sub-areas that aren't considered buildable. So out here in what we call West Hills 1, there's 432 acres, more or less, in here, and we're gonna show you what it looks like tonight. And of that 432 acres, about 174 of it is actually buildable that you can build on. And so the numbers change between what's called gross and what's called buildable. Another area to look at is Grand Haven, and we're gonna look at that tonight as well. This is the north of the Shedwin Farms development. So in the gross acreage, it's about 151 acres. In the buildable acreage, it's about 85 acres, because there's a conservation easement that does not allow development on a portion of that land. The reason this is important is because then we do go into a formulaic analysis of sort of distributing need across the expansion area to figure out where's the best place to locate it with our, with our two nuanced examinations of the priority land structure, lands to look at first, and also the Goal 14 factors. So we, this came out of the MGMUP as well, and this is the summary of land supply to support that 20-year planning horizon in terms of housing, economic development, and public amenities. As you know, Phase One came in already, so we already brought some land into the city as part of this project. We brought in this three up here, which is a school district site for 42 acres. We brought in what we call Redmond Hill Road, RHR, which is about 23 acres of buildable acreage, and it's meant to support 81 homes. We bought, brought in the Fox Ridge Road area, which is about 65 buildable acres and is meant to support 227 new homes. And we brought in the Riverside South area, which is 129 acres, meant to support 552 new homes. So of that 6,000 new homes that we need to support the population, we assigned this many new homes to these three areas, 1, 2, and 4, and then we had a school site as well. So what that does is that takes off of the, the expansion need, it takes some acreage off of that, because we've already done a Phase One, that calculates to these numbers here. So that changes things a little bit. Now we have 54 acres of need in public schools, and we have about 1,200 new dwelling units that we need to assign in terms of residential land supply. What's interesting about it, though, that we want to talk to you tonight about, is this didn't happen. So these new housing units did not happen on those lands that were brought in in 2004. They've been in the UGB for 16 years now. And this didn't happen. This is two northwest neighborhood activity centers where we assigned some high-density residential development, but because this, this plan did not move forward, those didn't occur either, and that land's already been developed. So in terms of the exception lands, how do we deal with the housing need question? The issue before you is that the MGMUP Table 16, it reflects significant housing development on three exception land areas that were brought into the UGB in 2004, but there's been no urban development that's taken place on any of those lands, so not one new housing unit. In addition, planned zoning for multifamily and transit quarters were, was rescinded after the remand decision, and those properties have already developed. And the neighborhood activity centers did not move forward either. So we're showing capacity for housing development within our existing UGB that we know that is not going to happen. So the question is, should we amend the record to revise the housing capacity in the exception lands and the existing UGB? So we say, actually, less housing's going to occur in the UGB, which means that we need to assign more units to the need for expansion, which would probably increase the acreage of need. So I've talked to you through what this looks like here in terms of these three exception areas that haven't yielded any new homes, and this adds up to, I think, 860 homes altogether. Oh, yeah, look at that. And so, in, in terms, and then how it's, the planned zoning for it in terms of R2, R1, and R2, and R1. And this is important, we're gonna focus a little bit on R2, on the Riverside South to sort of walk you through this thought process, but the planned zoning's important because it shows what the calculated anticipated density would have been for those areas.
So Heather, can I ask a question going back to, let's take the Riverside area?
Yeah.
Is, the property that's there is within the UGB, but it's outside the city limits? And is that property that has the bigger acreage, so we are not gonna be able to get the density that we would want, or is that in a different area than I'm thinking?
I'm gonna show you a map, which I think is gonna help answer that question. So since the 2003 submittals, so we're working under these old rules, right? Since the 2003 submittal, the state commissioned a study from Eco Northwest to say, there was, there's been a lot of discussion in the state of Oregon about whether these exception lands actually redevelop and meet the need of cities when they're brought into the UGBs. And so the state commissioned a study from Eco Northwest to study that. It was done in 2015, and the study came back with a conclusion that really parceledized rural residential land brought into a UGB does not typically redevelop into urban densities, especially one and two-acre parcels. So people are not, that's, that's not moving and developing from one residence on one acre into six, seven, eight, or nine units on that one acre. People are happy in the, living in those situations adjacent to the city limits and paying 2/3 of the tax, taxes. So this shows, I think, Mayor, this is where your question was, this is Riverside South. So if you look at this map, you will see the number of parcels in this area that are one and two-acre parcels, and there's a lot of them. And so we're assigning R2 density to this whole area in that, in that need calculation of 552 new housing units. But the reality is, and it's already been shown over time here in McMinnville in the last 16 years, these are more than likely not going to redevelop into urban densities, these smaller parcels. And then the three larger parcels, the 10-acre ones in here, they need to get infrastructure from the existing city limits over to these parcels to be able to redevelop them. So they're gonna either need to get easements through these private parcels, and that's not occurring right now, or they're relying on these parcels to redevelop, bring sewer water and wastewater pipes into these, into these parcels, and then they connect and these redevelop. So these will also be fairly difficult to redevelop in a, in a timely manner.
Well, and the three, and the three-acre lots in the front there are, have fairly newer homes on, and so redevelopment would be costly. And then I guess my next question would be the 10-acre, are they farmland right now?
Yes. I believe so.
May I as well? So on these lots, which you said are paying 2/3 of the city taxes and are inside the UGB, they're... they're, but they're on McMinnville Water and Light and receiving full services from the city? Or no?
No. So these are mostly, I believe, on septic and wells. And when I said they were paying two-thirds of taxes, they're still in the county, they're not in the city limit. So they don't pay a tax levy, the $5 and some odd cents per $1,000 of assessment, that's not on their tax bill. The people who live over, if somebody lived here, they would be paying it, but these people don't. So they live, they live on that one acre lot, they have elbow room, they're a mile away from downtown McMinnville and they're not paying city of McMinnville taxes.
Yeah, and that would be $5.02, so they don't pay that percentage per thousand. The other thing is they are on our electric because our electric at Mac Water and Light is outside of the city limits because that's set by kind of a stewardship of who provides electric. But water only stays within the city limits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also have a question, it goes back a few frames, but you don't need, the framework doesn't need to move here. But when you were talking about the Grand Haven area and you were talking about an 80-acre easement, is that the Yamhill County Soil, Water, and Conservation District? Is that their, is that their land that's in that Grand Haven area?
Yeah, and we're going to talk about that later in the presentation. But yes, in 2008, they put an easement on that property that doesn't allow any development to occur on it. And we have some maps that will show you those lands.
Okay, and my last question is, when you say that we know this land isn't going to develop, we know that because it's been 16 years or whatnot and it has not, there's been.
So what we're, keep in mind that what we're doing is we're trying to assign a 20-year housing need to land, meaning that this land will develop housing units in a 20-year timeframe to serve our population growth. And this land's been in the city's UGB for 16 years and it's generated very little interest in redevelopment. We've actually gone out and talked to these property owners all along here to try, you know, ascertain their interest in development as we're struggling with our discussions of housing and land constraints and none of them are interested. A couple of them have come on the market recently and then they didn't get picked up by developers either because the improvement value is high enough that it doesn't make sense to pick up a three-acre parcel and redevelopment by itself. It would need to be an aggregate number of parcels coming together to create like a five to 10-acre development to really pencil out. Thank you.
Just to add, Heather, I've gone out and talked to all of them. I know a number of individuals that are out there and they have moved specifically out there to have acreage. And unless they have a generational change, they just don't have a desire because that's where they want to retire, that's where they want to be.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's a nice setup. They have elbow room, but they have access to all the city amenities, right? And pay less taxes. And we've often been told when we bring this up to people that this is an issue that we're struggling with. We're often told, you know, if they pass away and there's, children don't want to remain out there and keep that property, maybe then it will sell. But that's not really a 20-year planning horizon metric, right?
It's not something we would want to use as a planning metric period.
No, right, I mean.
That would be terrible.
But we've talked in our team, like, are we supposed to ascertain physical health and try to guess those things? But anyways, that's just part of the, you know, the Oregon land use system and the rules and regs in which we're working. So the other two pieces in here is that the MGMUP proposed that 15.6 acres of vacant land in future transit or quarters be rezoned to multifamily residential. And it didn't get rezoned because this plan was challenged in the court system. And so that has since developed as single-family residential, so much lower density. So there's not the opportunity to reason on those properties at this point in time. And then we've had some discussion about this already at the city, but there were two planned Neighborhood Activity Centers in the plan. The one up at the northwest area of Baker Creek and Hill Road and then also one at Grand Haven. And because the plan didn't move forward, those properties have also since redeveloped and not at the high-density residential as proposed in the Neighborhood Activity Centers. So to you, City Council, we can amend the record. So we can do a new buildable lands inventory, we can assign new housing capacity within the UGB. And of those 6,000 units, say that only, you know, we're saying, of the 6,000 units, we're saying that all but 5,000 are being achieved within the existing UGB. But we know of all the 6,000 units, probably only about 3,500 is actually being achieved in the existing UGB. So we could go back and revise that forecast, which then would put more need for acreage on the expansion plan. And the pros of that would be, it would provide a much more realistic capacity forecast. However, here's the cons. Based on the history in McMinnville, we are going to assume it's likely to be challenged because every step, every milestone has been challenged here in terms of growth planning. And it's stepping outside of the safe harbor approach, which is that we're in a legal remand within an existing public record and the need is not something that's an assignment of error. So the courts affirm the need as described in the plan. And so it's kind of a safe harbor for us and if we just move forward with that assigned need, then it couldn't be challenged. The other option in front of you is to leave the record as is. So understand that we know that we are doing an expansion plan that's not achieving the full need as described and affirmed in the record. But, and then address this capacity issue when we do our urban reserve area process. The urban reserve area process more than likely will get challenged, so this would be part of that challenge timeframe. But it avoids the legal challenge at this time on this UGB reman response. And these areas also could provide an opportunity for park and open space uses in some, like Fox Ridge Road, we've been looking at some of the parcels there that might be opportunities for an overlooked park, which would be, you know, evaluated when we go through the Parks Master Planning Process in the next couple of years. The cons to, option two, is that the plan overstates the 20-year UGB capacity. I just described that to you, by over, you know, by about 1,500 housing units. And we also retain this, what we're calling faux inventory in the UGB, meaning we have this land in the UGB that we know is not going to actually achieve new housing units. Our staff recommendation to you though is option two. We feel that it's the least risky in terms of the legal process and it allows us to at least move forward. And it leaves, but what it does is it leaves the record as is and that we address this question when we go through the urban reserve area evaluation. But we're also recommending that the city start the urban reserve area process immediately following the submittal, the UGB reman response because we anticipate that that could be a slow slog through the process as well in terms of legal challenges.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, go ahead, Remy.
Thank you. Is there any side effect of option one in terms of specifically the lands that were already brought into the UGB? In other words, if we go back and say, you know, that these were proposed lands, however, these lands aren't being developed, do those lands, is there any change on those lands? Do they remain within the UGB? Do they?
Well, what we could do, Counselor, so I think this is your question. What would a new analysis look like? And would it stay in the UGB and would it still, you know, and what would its role be? We believe a new analysis would show that those lands would have less housing capacity than what's assigned to them. There's a couple of things going on, especially Riverside South. We have a comprehensive plan policy that does not allow residential development within 500 feet of industrial development and that land is, so that's kind of awkward. And then because of the large, because of the parcellized nature of it being one and two acre parcels, we believe that it would need to be a low-density residential zone because we don't see it redeveloping as high-density. It's also very, if you think about it, it's very isolated residential neighborhood from another residential neighborhood amenities. So we would assign less capacity to it, the 552 housing units would change to a lower number and that's what we'd come in as the new building lands inventory and capacity for that area. We probably wouldn't recommend trying to remove it from the UGB because we don't think that that McMinnville would be successful with that with the current state regulations. Because exception lands is a priority land to look at first.
Remy, does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Heather, you know, if we are looking at option number two and with your study and your educated and experience, how far will that option two take us in the knowledge that we have today? Are we looking at a capacity for 10 years, more or less? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. So to the emails that were going, that I sent to answer Counselor Garvin's email and I sent out to you some stuff over the weekend. In order to meet our need forecast, we should be issuing about 225 to 250 new housing permits per year. We have entitled in the city right now probably about 1,000, so four to five years worth. And then if we're talking about another 1,100 dwelling units as our additional need, that probably gets us another four to five years. So yeah, about 10 years probably.
And as you say, if we were to go with option two and then start the process of bringing newer information on and looking towards a real 20-year horizon, we know that it's going to take time, it's going to take effort, it's going to take money. It'll go through the same process that we've been doing for the last 20 years. But that is an option and that's kind of what you're alluding to?
Yeah, the urban reserve area process is a little bit different than a UGB process. It's not as onerous in terms of the evaluation and it's a 30-year, it's a 30-year land supply. I'm not sure how long it would take or not take here in terms of the challenges the city would meet, but it's definitely something that I would recommend the city start immediately because I do see you would have at least 10 years in front of you with the challenge. With the challenge history that's been here in the past 26 years to get to this place, I think it's, I think it's safe to assume it's going to take some time.
Thank you for that clarification.
Heather, Council President Minkie has a question.
I'm just kind of affirming, I've sat through so many of these seminars with the action committees. But yeah, the whole idea was to go with, you know, the original, which was 2001, 2003, because there's only one strike on it and we might be able to come out through it fairly rapidly with much less cost, but then go for the urban reserve and it just seems like the better way to go. And they can actually do a lot of the urban reserve work, I think, as doing this.
Yeah, so a lot of the work we're doing now will feed the urban reserve analysis as well.
Including the great neighborhoods work that we have been doing over the last couple of years, correct?
Yes, that is booked, so any new development has to meet those qualities.
Could you expand on the urban reserve a little bit?
Yes, so in Oregon land use, you can, you can establish, you need to establish a 20-year, you need to have 20 years of land, you need to have land supply, excuse me, land supply to serve 20 years of growth in your UGB, urban growth boundary. You can, as a municipality, decide to do the planning for another 30 years of land supply that's called an urban reserve area. And that's where you bring, after you've established that, that's the land you then use to backfill your urban growth boundary as the urban growth boundary gets assumed. So rather than going through this process we're going through right now, to the extent we're going through it, you would look at your urban reserve area land supply for your future UGB amendments. And it's a little less onerous.
So Heather, can I ask a clarifying question there then?
Go ahead, Wendy.
The urban reserve would start where this 20-year horizon leaves off?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's sequential. And then when you said we'll address these areas that we don't think are going to be developed the way we think we are, how does the urban reserve area process do that when we already have it in the existing 20-year horizon as something different? Can you kind of give me, orient me to what that looks like to address?
Yeah, and I may have answered your first part of the question the wrong way. We would do the urban, the urban reserve area would be a new set for us. So we wouldn't be looking backwards to the work we've already done. So it would be 30 years from the timeframe in which we decide to do this work. And we've already done a lot of that work anticipating an urban reserve area because that was our original goal with our housing needs analysis work that we did in 2018. So we would extrapolate that forward to, I think it was a 2067 horizon. Now with that said, your second question was, how do we reassign capacity to these UGB lands in our buildable lands inventory if we're going through this process and saying it's X? And then in a couple of years, we go through the process and say, no, we reevaluate it and it's Y. And I might have Spencer weigh in on this too, but the Oregon land use system and the regulations allow cities to do reevaluation based on new data as you continue to do the growth planning process and to update your numbers because the intention is you really should be serving your need.
And so they allow you to update your numbers. They wouldn't, there's nothing against not updating your numbers now to finish this existing process and then updating our numbers with a new process. That's what you're saying is.
Well, so there's nothing that prevents us from updating our numbers now for this UGB reman process. However, it's introducing new data sets to the record, new findings, which are all challengeable. And then there's, and so that's why we're recommending don't do that.
Right, so there's no penalty, just to restate my thought, there's no penalty to not update the numbers if we know now, we have additional information now, if we just stick with the original numbers and don't, there's no potential risk of doing that.
No, in fact, and I forgot to tell you this, in fact, the city tried to do that. So when we submitted in 2003, it went up the chain, it came back to us, we resubmitted again in 2005. When we resubmitted, we tried to update the buildable lands inventory based on how things have been built out and the housing needs analysis, that got challenged. And the resubmittal based on those assumptions and then that was not held up. And that's that whole periodic review discussion. So the task had already been approved, the HNA, the 2001 HNA had already been approved and the BLI had already been approved.
Okay, great, thank you.
But they're not, sorry.
I was just going to say, Counselor Geary has a question.
On the urban URA, alphabet soup, on the URA, can you, I get the, it depends at 20 years to 30 years. For reference, can you put dates on that for me? In relation to our planning horizon and where we're at now and what we're talking about now?
Well, I think that was Wendy's question as well. So we have not done a URA. And so the planning horizon would be 30 years from when we decide to do it and we have an analysis that could be used for that work that we did in the last two years.
The planning horizon is effective from when we started? I thought, I thought we were told when the planning horizon windows are and we have to operate inside of those.
No, we are told what our population targets are and we are also, so we are, a lot of people get confused and say, why can't we just choose to not grow as much as the state wants us to? Or where'd you get this number from? And we are told what the population targets are. So we are told if you're going to do growth planning. So we are told if you're going to do growth planning to 2050, this is going to be your population target. If you're going to do growth planning to 2067, this is going to be your growth target. And then we're also told that you have to have 20 years of, you have to have enough land supply to support a 20-year planning horizon of growth in your UGB. And you can look at an additional 30 years. So to play this out, I think this might help. Let's say we submit the UGB, this reman submittal, and it's for a planning horizon of 2003 to 2023. And that goes forward, and it's successful, knock on wood. And then we say we want to do an urban reserve area. We're then going to pick a 30-year planning horizon based on a date. And right now, we could pick it based on 2000, we, we established it as a 2021 flag in the sand date with our previous work we did. So we would move forward, oh, that's, now I'm exploring this in my head. We'd have a planning horizon to 2023, we'd probably have to move forward to 2053. And do a 30-year planning horizon there. And then based on that information, we would then look at land supply for that 30 years based on the population target that the state gives us.
Right.
Yeah.
And then Heather, those, those population, those population examples, is that what comes out of Portland State?
Yes, uh huh. That's the, so that's the population forecast, the court, we call it the coordinated population forecast.
And thus, again, that's given to us, we have no control over that, and that's what drives our parameters.
Yeah, we can, so they do the forecasts every four to five years. They did, they did our most recent one in an expedited period of three years. But they do the forecast, they just come out with a new one for this area. And we have the opportunity to peel the forecast when it's in a comment period. That's already come and gone. And then the, the number assigned to us is the number assigned to us. So we can't as a community say, that's too much, we don't want to grow that much.
Regardless of its accuracy. You had mentioned a couple of things on, we have to do this, we have to do that, and I know that's come up. Remind me again what the state's repercussions are for that?
For what?
Well, failing to have the analysis, analyses and inventories you mentioned.
Well, McMinnville has been in a non-compliant state for a long time now.
Right, so what are the state's repercussions?
I don't know that there are states, I don't know that there are state repercussions, that's the question for Spencer. But you have repercussions as a community, which we talked about, which is the gentrification issue and affordability.
Okay, and then what's the cost of the URA?
I'll have to go back, we provided you those numbers when we came to you with these two different options. And you gave us the direction to do the reman response and then to follow up with the URA.
Okay, I can dig through that, that was in there. Thanks.
Yep. Okay, this was supposed to be the easy part of the night. So, but anyways, that's, that's our staff recommendation, is to keep the buildable lands inventory as is and the capacity as described in the current record. And I don't know, Mayor, if you want to give us direction as we go through each component of this, or if you want to wait till the end.
Well, I, I was just, you know, Zach asked the question of Spencer, what would be the penalties? And I know we've talked about that in past sessions, but Spencer, could you maybe answer that question for Zach?
Yeah, hey Zach, could you repeat the question? My audio cut out for a minute.
Sure, I, I was asking to those sort of things that Heather was referencing, the states, you know, you must maintain a 20-year buildable land inventory, those, those type of things. And then the ones that we are currently well behind on, delinquent on. What's the, what are the state's repercussions for being delinquent on those, or continuing delinquency on those, or failing to, to do those or rectify those? What's, what's the state's repercussions on, on the city of McMinnville?
Yeah, well, I, I, here's what, I'll preface it by saying it's not fun. Because essentially what happens is that you, you, you could be subject to having your jurisdiction taken over by LCDC and them essentially legislating at the local level on behalf of the city. So if, say, say, an interest group or an individual in the community filed a complaint with LCDC that the city wasn't fulfilling its land use planning obligations, they could, they could take, essentially, it's almost a parallel path, it's filing like a Luba appeal. And the, and then the state can make a determination to undertake that process on behalf of the city. And we, at that point, lose a lot of our decision-making authority.
Thank you, Spencer. I think that's given some clarity.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Remy.
I just wanted to take a moment for anybody that might not be aware that while we were behind on our housing needs analysis, it was actually our Planning Director Richards that pointed that out and then brought that to the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force. And we reevaluated our, 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 our work plan and our short-term, midterm, and long-term plans and, and moved that up in order to complete that and to become compliant with the state. And also, of course, to have the most updated information. And then the planning department executed that. I just wanted to, to point that out, that that was, it was, the fact that it isn't complete yet is not because of a lack of effort. As soon as that was identified as something that was missing, the, it became a, a high priority for the planning department and the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force.
Yeah, and, and that's a good point. And I want to follow up my comment with saying that I don't think the state would take, that, what I, what I was discussing would be characterized as an extreme measure, that the state would probably only take as a measure of last resort where they think that the city is proactively avoiding or declining to undertake its land use planning obligations. Not what has been going on in McMinnville, where the city is trying to solve problems and just hasn't come to a final resolution. Yeah.
If I may just jump in, I would absolutely agree with what Spencer just said in terms of the state's position that we would take. I think, I think this community is, is shown an intention to move forward, and we're supportive of that effort.
Thank you, Kip.
For the record, that was Kevin Young, DLCD rep.
Our good friend.
Okay, so back to the question of if, do you want to give direction as we go, or do you want to wait till the end? We have five different decision-making points.
So we're, we're with the first decision-making point right now, correct, Heather?
Yes.
So I'll just
Just something there, if you don't mind?
Go ahead.
Go through and listen to it, and then ask questions of Heather afterward. I mean, it's going to be a long time if we don't go through it fairly together now. I think people understand. What we're doing is looking at something that, we're picking up something that happened back in 2001, '03. We're moving it forward because it only has one flaw in it. And we're trying to correct that flaw. Because of that, it costs us like half a million dollars less. And then if we go forward from there, the urban reserve will cost us more. But that's something, that's, we can do a lot of that work as we're doing this work.
Correct.
So I think it'd be nice if we just kind of let her finish the presentation.
Okay, so if, if you could just write down your questions, unless you have a burning question that really stifles your understanding, let's move forward, Heather.
Okay. Okay, so now I'm going to turn it over to DJ. He's going to talk about affordable housing and what that means from a housing need perspective as well. If we still have DJ.
Yeah, no, you still have me. Thanks, Heather. Everybody hear me? Yes. So I'm going to talk about three topics in succession. I'm going to talk about affordable housing as it was researched and acknowledged in 2001, and then updated in 2003. And, but, and, and how that might affect our land need. I'm going to talk about serviceability a little bit and the initial look that Jacobs Engineering did at serving the study areas that Heather was showing you. And talk about the, the, this issue of whether or not some of the land, one of the, one of the, one of the questions that Remy brought up about the Grand Haven conservation easement and what effect that has on buildable land. And then we'll finish up talking about hazards. So that's what's out in front of us. The affordable housing issue, there is a question that we have for you that we would like to get some input on, from you on. So in 2001, there was information in the acknowledged residential land need analysis about how many households would be moderate income and low income. But that data, which came out of the 2001 census, was never really translated into units, dwellings that would be occupied by, by low and moderate income households, and how that might translate into acreage. And so our question for you is, should we amend the record to include affordable housing needs more specifically than it was articulated back in 2003? And also whether or not we ought to look at land set suitability criteria for addressing that need. Slide. So what was, here's, here are some, I wanted to review some of the findings from 2001 that have been acknowledged and are in the acknowledged record. The, that the distribution of household incomes is like, in McMinnville is likely to remain the same over time, that 43% of new households will be considered moderate and low income, 30% being low income, about 13% being, being moderate income. More than 60% of households headed by persons under the age of 35 and over the age of 65 are likely to be low income. And I think most importantly, next slide. Heather?
Yeah, we're there. I, I jumped ahead of you.
Oh, okay. That most moderate income households are going to live in rental housing, that low income households are likely to live in apartments. And what that's going to mean for your housing mix is it's going to transition towards smaller units and more attached housing in response to that demographic shift. And then lastly, and arguably most important for the urban growth boundary is that there is limited redevelopment opportunities inside the existing urban growth boundary. And so consequently, most housing for new residents, including for moderate and low income households, is going to need to come from new construction on vacant land. In other words, we're not going to find big areas inside the urban growth boundary that we can redevelop for higher density. It's just not available, your housing stock isn't that old, and you don't have large areas to redevelop. So applying that data from the 2001 Housing Residential Land Need Analysis, the RLNA, to the housing forecast, this is kind of a distribution that comes right out of that acknowledged and approved plan, approved forecast for your mix of housing. 60% in single-family detached and mobile homes on individual lots. So that's the two, the first two columns. And then 40% of the new housing stock was estimated would be in attached products, either apartments or townhomes. And if you apply the, to that 6,100, 6,114 units, this income mix, next slide. About 57% of future households were expected to be median income and above. Moderate income, 80% of median and above, was 13% and low and very low at 30%. So that's the distribution of dwelling by income category. And so the question that we asked is, where is that production going to come from? Was there a question? Okay. So where was that, where is that production going to come from? The public sector versus the private sector? And in the 2003 Buildable Land Needs Analysis is a finding and, and acknowledged part of the plan that only 300 to 400 assisted housing units were likely to be built in McMinnville through 2023. And I, those that are on the Housing Task Force can probably know better than I whether or not you've been able to hit that target. I expect that that target is probably ambitious still. So that means that the balance of that housing for affordable households, households that have got some income challenges, is going to have to be delivered by the private sector. And we asked the question, what is there in the study areas that could inhibit the private sector from being able to do that? And so we asked Portland State Center for Real Estate Studies to take a look at around the state and look specifically at slope. Because land that doesn't have slope on it is less challenging to build on. And so, but we've got quite a bit of the, of the study areas have some slope on it. So we wanted to know, what effect does slope have on housing development costs? And what they found for single-family housing was that land with greater than 10% slope had 24% higher housing development costs. And that that translated into $20,000 to $35,000 of per lot costs. And when you mark that up to market, it could be as high as $100,000, not across the board. But it's a significant number. And it means that for lands that are being planned for single-family, anything greater than 10% slopes is much more expensive to develop and is going to be more difficult to develop for income-constrained households. Next slide.
DJ, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Does that include, like in McMinnville, where in the West Hills, we know that we would have to create a pump station to get water up to them? Or are we just talking generic cost on slopes?
We're just talking clearing dirt, leveling building sites. It doesn't have anything to do with the infrastructure costs. Those would be on top of this.
Yeah.
We also asked them to take a look at multifamily developments. And they found that the impacts were significantly greater on-site development costs for multifamily because the size of the building sites are bigger, the parking demands are bigger. There's just a lot of additional cost that you have to clear a site for multifamily to make, to put it, get it ready for development. And so land, multifamily housing projects, they found, and they studied about 50 of them, that had over 10% slopes, had 50% higher site development costs than land with less than 5% slopes. It's really significant. And they found many fewer market rate projects on steeper slopes. The, in, the developers tend to only develop multifamily housing on steeper slopes for higher end, a higher end market because of the added costs. Next slide. And they thought, we also asked them to look at examples of affordable housing projects. They were able to only find a handful of projects that were built on slopes greater than 5%. One of the quotes came from a developer who said, there's an additional cost burden. And so we just don't develop on sites with, we don't develop affordable housing on sites with slope because they don't pencil out. In other words, we're kind of trying to find the null set here. It doesn't exist because you can't build it. Next slide. And so they found overall that the, the markups for building affordable housing on, on sites with slopes were similar to the impact in terms of overall cost, the actual dollar cost, to what they, that what they were for market rate. There was no, there was no savings there. And that the burden of slope is compounded by the effect of affordable housing projects have to compete for money. And so if you've got expensive projects and you're competing because you're trying to build on slopes and you're trying to compete for funding in communities that are building projects that don't have slope constraints, that you're less competitive for getting funding. And so the overall analysis of that, next slide, is that these, that, that the combination of slope and your need for affordable housing, it, it's, it's going to be very challenging to do that. And so our, our question is that none of this is really reflected in the current criteria. in the current criteria for either need for for affordable housing. It's not reflected in the current set of facts. The data are there, but they were never carried forward to and calculated out in in terms of households and acreages. And and then whether or not some of these this cost information in terms of what kind of land needs to be brought into the urban growth boundary in order to meet this identified need, whether or not we should consider that as part of the remand process. So that's the question. Should we amend the record to include information about this and address these needs? The pro is that the need for affordable housing is more directly identified in the plan and it establishes a fact basis for evaluating land for based on development considerations. The cons is that it introduces new information into the record that could be challenged. So I go ahead?
Go ahead, DJ.
Okay. So the next thing I, we're not, I'm not asking for, I'm certainly, we'll answer questions, but we wanted to give you a status report on this serviceability and buildable land. Here's the, again, to refresh, here's the study areas that we were looking at. And we asked Jacob engineers to 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 take a look at these these study areas and look at what it would take to serve those study areas. They found that all of the buildable land could be quote, served, but some of it is much more challenging and less economical and practical to serve than other areas. The service concepts that they evaluated were kind of based on first principles. They didn't do a lot of detailed analysis in this. This isn't master planning. This is just examining how you might lay out sewer lines, water lines and the like. And then they evaluated those study areas on a five point rating system. They haven't completed yet that yet. They're still, that's still underway. But I wanted to share with you what some of the early results are. I'm going to present a map here in an area and it's got green areas, yellow areas and red areas. The green areas are study areas that are pretty easy to expand services. Gravity sewers is all that would be required to serve them. They're within pressure zone one, which is your only water service pressure zone right now. And they're all accessible from an existing public road network. And so I've listed them here. You'll note that as I go through these, some of the study areas that are listed include the exception areas that are already in the urban growth boundary. And we did that because no development has happened in those areas. And so we wanted to evaluate their serviceability to see if maybe that was explaining why those areas weren't developing. But these areas, those areas in green are pretty easy to serve. And yellow are areas that have got some constraints because they require less than an ideal solution for one of the three. Actually, we also looked at stormwater, one of the service extensions that public facilities that we were looking at. And here is a list of the ones that are in the yellow category. And in parentheses is the service constraint that confronts each of these areas. And then the next slide are areas in red and they are ones that have significant serviceability constraints that require less than ideal solutions for multiple services. And these include the West Hills, Fox Ridge Road. And north of Fox Ridge Road are the areas that are constrained in red. So here's what the map looks like if you take, when you, when you evaluate all of that. The areas in green are the ones that are from us, just, this is just from public facilities now, just from service, water and sewer and things like that. Areas in green are easiest to serve. The areas in yellow are the next, are more difficult to serve. And the areas in red are the most difficult to serve. And difficulty translates into cost. You'll note that in the red, there's also some pink at the far outside edge. That that shading represents areas that have got hazard constraints, steep slopes, landslide hazards. They're also way up there in terms of water pressure zones. This goes from pressure zone three through five. So reservoirs would have to be built for all of those areas. And so they're, they're significantly constrained. And then the lightly shaded area in yellow, that's west of Sheridan Road, W O S R. That area is lightly shaded in area in yellow. It's subject to liquefaction during an earthquake. In other words, any structure on top of that land is going to sink. And the structure is like unlikely to survive. So it's got a significant hazard constraint as well as the infrastructure constraints there.
And then DJ, this area up here is already in the UGB and came in as an exception area.
That's correct, Fox Ridge Road. And then north of that are some areas that have got landslide hazards. All of that area is shaded orange because you have to pump that sewage. It, you can't serve it by gravity. I would also point out that Riverside South has got that same constraint. It's below the, to use engineering terminology here, the invert elevation of the of the old sewage treatment plant. So you have to pump it to the old sewage treatment plant. And then from there, it has to get pumped to the new sewage treatment plant. So it has to be pumped twice. And so that's why it's got a serviceability constraint. Next slide. So their work isn't done, as I said, they, this is only, these maps only show what the advantages and disadvantages of areas for extending or expanding the existing service network. We haven't assessed downstream impacts where there might be capacity constraints that would also add cost to serving these areas. So some areas that are currently looking green or might become yellow and some areas that are looking yellow might become red, depending on how that works out. And so they're currently engaged in doing that. Any questions here? Okay, the next area that I want to talk about is getting to Commissioner Drebin's question about Grand Haven and what the effect of that is, the conservation easement. Next slide, in 2008, a conservation easement was placed on a hundred and seventy acres of land in the Grand Haven area. Eighty one of those acres are inside the existing UGB. And that land on the existing comp plan map was designated for residential development. The easement, in effect, means that you can't develop on any of it. It also removes about fifteen acres of build of land because you can't get to it. And the map I'm going to show you in a, in a minute is going to, we'll, we'll demonstrate that. So the question is, which course of course of action should we pursue? Should we resolve this loss of residential capacity inside the existing UGB now as part of the remand effort? Should we do it later as part of the urban reserve area planning process? So after this gets done. And then there's a third option that I'll explain in a minute that is kind of in between. It's called a UGB swap. So first, let's look, take a look at a map so you under, you get some appreciation for the geography involved here. The shaded area to the south, the gray area, is inside the existing UGB. None of that land that had been planned for residential development can develop any longer. It's eighty one acres. The fifteen acre area that's in light gray there is completely surrounded by conservation easement or the river. So it's very challenging to develop. If you did develop it, it would be completely cut off from the rest of the city. It's this little fifteen acre swap. Above the line is outside of the urban growth boundary. You can see another nineteen acres of there, this kind of cutoff from the rest of the city. Fifty one acres that is in conservation easement that's permanently protected from any development. Twenty acre, twenty eight acres that's in the flood plain that's protected from development because it's constrained. And sixty eight acres in the Grand Haven area that could be developed. It's all currently zoned as farmland and it's high value farmland. So we're not, we're not as concerned about the areas outside the urban growth boundary. We'll still evaluate that Grand Haven area potentially for including it in the urban growth boundary, but only the areas that aren't subject to this hat, to this conservation easement. The bigger question is what to do about the eighty one acres, eighty one and then five. So ninety six acres really of land inside the UGB that is lost to us for future development, for urban development. And so the question, and that fifteen acres, by the way, is in an exception area. So it's going to develop at low density. So the pros of dealing with this in the remand is that it's the first opportunity that we have to resolve this issue and it addresses the loss of capacity in the plan. But we're going to, we would need to change the fact basis in the plan and amend it. And so it's subject to a challenge. And we would have to assess whether or not it's possible to replace the lost development capacity elsewhere inside the existing UGB before looking outside the UGB. It would likely increase the amount of land that we need to look for outside. And as you know, people that are opposed to any expansion, this is just throwing gasoline on the fire. Option two is to address this in the remand process, which would mean that the, that the, excuse me, in the, in the urban reserve area process, which would mean that the record for the remand would stay intact. And it would reduce the, the challenges that we would face if we were to make this amendment. But it also means that we've got this false inventory that's in the, in the, subject now to a conservation easement. There's housing production that was associated with those, that acreage. And it delays resolution till the urban reserve area is is completed. And then the last, and this is the one that we recommend, is that we do a UGB swap. There is a special process in the, that's, that's got separate set of rules for it that LCDC and the commission have adopted when land inside of an urban growth boundary becomes unbuildable. And it's a swap. It's predicated on a like for like swap in terms of land's productivity and character. The con of going this way is it could be a challenge, again, based on this consideration of what areas are in the UGB that we might exchange for it. So there's going to be some facts that are no doubt going to be challenged associated with that or could be questioned. And the timeline is uncertain for it and we have to go through a separate application process to LCDC for it. But we still think that that is the way to go because it keeps the the remand process clean, more straightforward, keeps us within the existing record. And we could address this, this conservation easement reduction in buildable land through a separate process kind of in its own orbit. So with that, I'll turn it back to how the, those are the, the, the question there that we're asking for you is which way would you like us to go on this?
So the, the last dialogue is hazard areas in terms of buildable land. And we've introduced this to you in a past work session to sort of prime the pump for, for tonight and the direction that we need. So there's an Oregon land use goal number seven. And what it does is it requires local governments to adopt comprehensive plan inventories, policies and implementing measures to reduce risk to people and property from natural hazards. And natural hazards for purposes of this goal are floods, landslides, earthquakes, wildfire, et cetera. So we're meant to inventory the hazards and then develop policies and measures to reduce risk to people and property from them. Balance, and this comes out of the statewide natural hazards mitigation plan. Balancing growth with hazard mitigation is key to planning resilient communities. Therefore, understanding where development occurs and the vulnerability of the region's building stock is integral to developing mitigation efforts that move people and property out of harms way. Eliminating or limiting development in hazard prone areas can reduce exposure to hazards and potential losses and damage. And the intent of the goal is to protect people and property. So the issue is that the McMinnville Comprehensive Plan states that the city of McMinnville, this is our number two policy that we have in our comprehensive plan. City of McMinnville shall continue to enforce appropriate development controls on lands with identified building constraints, including but not limited to excessive slope, limiting soil characteristics and natural hazards. That's been in the comp plan since nineteen eighty one. The 2003 MGMUP identified and eliminated slopes over twenty five percent and flood plains as, and flood plains in terms of not being able to build on them. But they didn't identify any other hazard areas. Recent data has shown significant risk in portions of McMinnville and in the study area for high risk landslides and liquefaction during an earthquake. So the question is, should we identify those high risk hazard areas and identify them as unbuildable or limit development on them in this process? So the state is out with their most recent draft, 2020 draft of their state hazard mitigation plan. The DLCD put that out. And there's a chapter in there on Yam Hill County which identifies Yam Hill County as being high risk for landslides and earthquakes. And we also have a county natural hazards mitigation plan that's out right now. McMinnville is an addendum to that, that will be our first one. And in that addendum, we say operationally that we will do a hazard study and understand where hazard areas are and develop development policies for them. So we've done that as a planning team. We just completed it for both our UGB study area and a potential urban reserve area study area. To sort of walk you through the thought process behind this, I thought the state plan did a great job, so I wanted to highlight a little bit of it. When you're talking about hazards, you have the natural hazard that you've identified. And then you identify what, what are your vulnerable systems that are at risk in that hazard and where do they overlap? And the vulnerable systems are not only the built environment, but the population in that built environment and then a variety of other things. So you're identifying the who and what is vulnerable and then you're assessing the risk to them. Interestingly, the state did something new this year, which I really applaud. They brought in this, what they call a social vulnerability assessment. So they took it to a next level of assessment of the vulnerable systems. And I'll walk you through what that looks like. They use the CDC social vulnerability threats, themes and components, which looks at different types of households. So those households where people are sixty five or older could be more at risk or were households that had young children in it or households with a disability or households that have single parent households or income levels also bring in additional risk or the type of housing that's in these hazard areas. And I wanted to point that out to you because you'll notice that mobile homes and multi unit structures falls into this area of vulnerability. And if you remember, we shared with you in the McMinnville, the MGMUP, there was the discussion of an additional twelve hundred manufactured homes in our planning horizon. So some of the homes that we're looking for in the expansion area would be mobile homes and also multi unit structures. So the state evaluated eleven hazards and evaluated from a function of risk being how, the probability of how often it would happen and then the vulnerability of the population and property to that probability. And what we're going to focus on is earthquakes, floods and landslides. They all have a high local vulnerability ranking for Yam Hill County out of three rankings, low, medium, high. All three of those were high in terms of people and property being vulnerable to them. And then earthquakes and landslides have a very high risk probability factor. And then earthquakes and landslides have a very high risk probability factor for Yam Hill County out of a, a ranking of one to five, very low, low, moderate, high and very high. So we ranked the highest in both vulnerability and probability for earthquakes and landslides. So this shows you earthquakes, our probability is four Yam Hill Counties in here. So we're in this darker color, which is the very high risk assessment. So when they added the probability and the social vulnerability, they determined that this was a very high risk assessment, the highest risk for Yam Hill County earthquakes. And then floods were a high risk, so slightly lower when they added the probability and social vulnerability. And there's some other factors in here too that I didn't highlight here because it was easy to describe it this way. So the risk is high. And then if you recall, in McMinnville, as part of the growth management urbanization plan, a policy was, was adopted to not allow building in the floodplain. So we are able to mitigate the risk in that regard with that policy. And then this is the landslide hazards. We again are very high in Yam Hill County for landslide hazards in terms of risk. So Yam Hill County, this, this describes how in terms of landslides, which is governed by the Department of Geology and Minerals, and they're doing the, all the data work for this. This shows how they put that data together to describe low, moderate, high and very high landslide soils. And Yam Hill County is extremely likely in terms of probability to have landslides. And that's the highest ranking for that as well. So in terms of hazards to people and property, landslides are projected to occur more frequently in Yam Hill County due to climate change weather issues. So based on climate change, we expect to have more drastic rainfall on different occasions and also some drought. And so that's going to cause some soil changes, which will then contribute to more landslides occurring in this area. And it is expected that those landslides will damage both property and infrastructure. And McMinnville itself, so I talked about Yam Hill County. Now in terms of McMinnville's hazard study, McMinnville has high-risk landslide soils, both within the UGB, our existing UGB, and the study area. And this is per recent dogami maps that they've put out. So this shows the risk levels for landslides. The darker orange color here is high risk, yellow is moderate. This is our existing UGB. So you'll see all this high-risk landslide soils in here. And then this is part of our study area that we're looking at. So this shows that same map extrapolated onto our study area and into our different sub-study areas as well to show you what it looks like. All along here is where you see the high-risk landslides. And when we show you the slopes, it's going to correspond to that. But what's unique about discussion is we do have a lot of high-risk, high susceptibility landslide soils inside the city's UGB today and the city limits, and we have development that has occurred on them. And so that puts us in a sort of different position in terms of, you know, how do we move forward with discussing development on these lands? This is the Fox Ridge Road area that came as, in as exception land in phase one of this process. We've taken that map and extrapolated a little bit further into the sub area so that you can see out here in what we call the North Fox Ridge Road East area that we have the high-risk landslide soils as well. So in terms of the city council direction, the city is now aware of high-risk landslide soils in the West Hills, including some areas that are already developed and some areas that are within the existing UGB. Our question is, how should the city proceed? Do we call that land buildable or not buildable? And our staff recommendation is that we proceed with caution on it and that we put low-density development on it with mitigation measures and we adopt hazard policies in the future. And the reason for that is because we don't have the hazard policies in place today to use them for the UGB remand response. And again, it's introducing new data into the record that can be challenged. So option one is you can declare the high-risk areas unbuildable and develop the policies and findings. The pros is you'll minimize risk to people and property in a known high hazard area. The cons are it could be challenged, it's introducing new data into the record. And it could also result in potential takings issues for existing land in the UGB. Option two is to limit the density allocation on these lands as part of our Goal fourteen screening criteria. So we use hazards as part of our locational analysis. And again, with that, the pros would be we can still work to minimize risk to people and property in a known high hazard area. It minimizes the challenges that we could have, the legal challenges. It could still be challenged because we're reducing the capacity on these lands as it is introducing new data into the record. So again, our recommendation is to move forward with caution, but still do low-density development with mitigation measures on these lands because there's still known property and people risk issues there. But we also could look at these lands as potential parkland opportunities when we're doing the parks master planning process. Because as I pointed out to you, it's in that Fox Ridge Road area. And there's opportunities for scenic views and overlooked parks and natural open space, things of that nature. And we can also look at these high-risk soils as opportunities for rural urban transition areas when we put lower density on them. So the next hazard is earthquakes. There's four types of earthquakes that affect Yam Hill County, shallow crustal events. I won't go through all four of them, but there's four different types. And we look at them, McMinnville is especially vulnerable to the Cascadia event, more vulnerable than those around us due to the fact of the liquefaction soils that surround the city. The city is built on liquefaction soils and we also have high-risk liquefaction soils surrounding the city, which could lead to landslides during an earthquake event damaging property. And for those who don't know, soil liquefaction is, it's, it's when the ground fails. So DJ said it very well, the buildings essentially sink because the soil is no longer solid, it behaves like a liquid. And it occurs in water saturated, unconsolidated soils that are usually sandy, silty and gravelly. And to sort of demonstrate that as, in a visual is here's the existing soil. It's loosely packed, but it has some structure to it. And then with shaking, that structure gets shaken up and it disperses how it's all sitting together and it creates more pockets where you start to have sort of the liquid effect. And then your buildings start to sink. So in terms of earthquakes, McMinnville has a forty-five, so we talked, so the risk assessment is vulnerability and probability. So McMinnville has a forty-five percent chance of an earthquake of an intensity of six or greater in the next hundred years. This is out of the state natural hazards mitigation plan, McMinnville's right up in here. And this is our liquefaction soils. So the high-risk liquefaction soils are all this darker purple along here, which would probably be in the urban reserve area study plan. And then blue, which McMinnville's built on and surrounded by, is our moderate risk. So everything that's hatched, that has this diagonal line through it, is considered a very strong shaking area that will be impacted by earthquakes. And then anything that has this hatch mark in it is considered severe shaking, which will be, which would really create significant damage to property and people. So in terms of how to apply this to the study area, this shows where it exists in the study area. Orange is moderate liquefaction soils and red is high-risk liquefaction soils. And as DJ pointed out earlier, it's in our, what we call West of Old Sheridan Road study area. On the very edge here is where we find the high-risk liquefaction soils. So in terms of earthquakes, we again, same thing. We can declare the high-risk soils unbuildable and develop policies and findings for that. It will minimize risk to people and property in a known high hazard area, but it could be challenged because we're introducing new data into the record. Or we could limit the density allocation on these high-risk liquefaction soils as part of the Goal fourteen screening criteria. And with this effort, we're against recommending the same thing, proceed with caution and assign low-density development with mitigation measures. Because this land is mostly on the outskirts of the West of Old Sheridan Road study area, we don't think it's actually going to be that significant in the grand scheme of things when we get down to our final locational analysis. So by bringing it into the Goal fourteen factors, we, we feel fairly comfortable with that. And we can also look again for parkland opportunities. So the last hazard is the steep slopes discussion. And this was something that was used in the MGMUP for steep slopes. Our study area has changed a little bit, so we wanted to bring it to you in that regard. And it's supported by state regulations. So you can remove slopes greater than twenty-five percent as buildable land in your study area. On this map, anything that's in red is greater than twenty-five percent slopes. So to highlight the area where we see the most of it, it's out here in the West Hills. And what we've tried to do is create two sub areas out here so that we can talk about the steep slope area as a separate area. So all of this is, has slopes of greater than twenty-five percent. And we feel fairly comfortable in terms of being able to remove that. Your, city council needs to provide direction, but we can remove it from the buildables lands inventory because it's allowed in state law. And again, it will minimize risk to people and property in a known high hazard area. The con for this is it leaves less land in the study area for the location analysis because you're removing this right here. But if you recall, I showed you that map that showed this in terms of buildable acres. This is really only about a hundred and seventy-four buildable acres out of four hundred plus gross acres because the steep slope renders it unbuildable. Or we could keep it in and retain the acreage in the study area and then screen it as part of our Goal fourteen screening criteria. So our recommendation for this one is actually to remove it from the buildable lands inventory at this point in time. So based on the, what we have brought to you tonight, this is the study areas that we had coming out of our last work session with you. And then anything that's in a hatch mark here is stuff that we discussed as hazard areas that we wanted to bring to you for dialogue in terms of why, why did you want to do that with buildable land? And if you recall, so this is the lands, looking at landslide soils up in this North Fox Ridge Road area. And we recommended keeping it in and looking at it through the Goal fourteen factors. And one of the reasons to keep it in is it's sixty-one acres and fifty-eight acres of it is buildable without this policy direction in our comp plan that it's unbuildable in this high susceptible landslide soils. This is the liquefaction, and again, same thing. The amount of acreage that is considered buildable with our existing policies is the same thing as it would be without the liquefaction coming into play. So you'd be removing a significant amount of acreage from the study area without a policy that we already have in place to support it. And then this is the West Hills steep slope discussion. We're four hundred and thirty-two of the gross, there's four hundred and thirty-two gross acres. A hundred and seventy-four of them are buildable, but they're behind and interspersed amongst all these steep slopes. And so that's why we felt comfortable recommending that we remove those. And it's supported by state law. So with that, if you followed the staff recommendations, this would be the study area coming out of tonight. It would remove a hundred and seventy-four buildable acres over here in the West Hills area due to steep slopes and it's supported by state law. And then it would remove seventy acres up here that's in the Grand Haven area due to the Shuglin Farms Conservation Easement. I think this actually is a little less and I have that wrong on my notes here. I think this was fifty-something acres. But it would remove whatever's in the conservation easement out of that study area. So I started off telling you how many buildable acres we have in our study area, which is twenty-seven, two thousand seven hundred and seventy buildable acres coming into tonight. We walked you through what all the issues are that we see that we wanted to bring to bear to your discussion and get some direction on and gave you our recommendations. And of that recommendations, we're really only removing about two hundred and fifty acres out of that two thousand seven hundred and seventy acres of study area. Next steps would be, we would then apply the priority land structure to our buildable land map. So the map I just showed you in terms of now starting to look at the different priority lands. Urban reserve area first, we don't have any exception lands, lower quality, high value farmland, higher quality, high value farmland last. And then we would apply the Goal fourteen screening criteria. And we've talked a little bit about that with you, what those are. And then in early October, we would bring to you a draft UGB map. So we'd bring all those things together. In late October, we expect to have draft documents of all this work and then bring it in for joint public hearings and meetings in November and December. So that wraps up our presentation for tonight.
Thank you, Heather, for that presentation. I, you know, your, your power points and your maps and your dialogue around that helps us to bring into perspective. And so council, we're in a position right now to have a discussion and questions of anything you would have. In front of us, we have six decision points that have been presented to us with staff recommendation on all, I, I don't remember seeing one from number two, what, what the recommendation was in the buildable land area. But I'll just open it up for discussion among council, knowing that Heather can answer any questions or if people are, are, if council's ready to make determinations on this. So go ahead and open up and Claudia, if you can help. Well, I think, well, we'll, we'll keep the screen up because we may have to refer to that. So Claudia, if you can help me see raised hands among council.
And maybe mayor, if I can quickly itemize the five, I think it's five decision-making points is what I have. So if I'm missing one when I go through.
Number two, there wasn't one. So if you have your screens up that Heather sent to you, the decision pages are on page thirty-six, sixty-four, eighty-eight, ninety-nine and one oh four, if you've got slides up yourself.
Okay, and Mayor and Ron, I do have six. So the six that we would have is whether or not to change the housing capacity within the UGB on the exception lands. Whether or not to introduce the discussion of affordable housing where we have the data to support it, but we didn't actually have, bring the findings into the need base, into the locational analysis. And whether or not we wanted to do that, it introduces a little bit of legal risk, but it really addresses a significant issue for McMinnville. Whether or not we wanted to have high-risk landslide soils and declare them unbuildable. Same with high-risk liquefaction soils. And then whether or not we wanted to remove the steep slopes in the West Hills that are over greater than twenty-five percent from the buildable land. And that would remove West Hills one sub area. And then the Grand Haven easement, whether we want to deal with that now or do that as a future UGB land swap.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Maybe we can go to, again, what I've done is take notes on, on decision areas. And so in your slide presentation on page thirty-six is our first staff recommendation as it relates to the area of exemption land and housing capacity.
And you want me to go back to that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think that may help because you've got your staff recommendation there. I'll read it. You've recommended in this number decision point, option number two, leave the record as it is and address this question as a part of the URA process. as it is and address this question as a part of the URA process, but start the URA process immediately. We've had a lot of questions on that, and so I'll just open it up to staff. Do you feel comfortable with the recommendation of staff on that?
I certainly do.
Yeah, I can start, Mr. Mayor. I can also say that I'm in support of that. I think keeping the remand clean so that we can, we can go through it and have less chance of having it slow down and then addressing it with the URA seems like a good approach. So I'm in support of their recommendation on that.
Great. Go ahead, Kelly.
I also am in support of it. As clean as we can keep the original decision stuff, I'm for it, at least on this particular item.
Okay. I'll just call Remy, any thoughts on this?
Yes, I have, I mean, I think if this was the, if this is what we were talking about in and of itself, I would kind of feel one way about it. To me, there is, it is obvious in a way, as much as I don't necessarily like all the parts of it, I understand that there's generally a cost benefit in multiple ways to the city and therefore the citizens to move forward with a, keeping things as succinct as possible and moving forward. I think where I have pause is that when you look at all of these as a body, I'm then wondering, kind of with each point, the kind of the warning was that it could, we could then be challenged on that point. So I guess what I'm considering is if, if we don't kind of evaluate them as a whole, then is there not the potential that we're going to be challenged regardless? And if we're going to be challenged regardless, is it not best to move forward with our absolute best plan even though there might be a greater cost to it?
So Heather, could you address Remy's thoughts there possibly?
I'll do a little bit, but I think I would like Spencer to weigh into on what it means from a legal process perspective. So when weighing out the challenge, the potential for challenge, what you want to do is try, in my perspective, what you want to do is keep things as tight as possible so that people don't feel propelled and compelled to challenge the plan. And so when we were thinking through this, we tried to think through what were the things that would, one, set a precedent statewide, because Thousand Friends would not like to do that. And then, two, what would be really harmful to the city in terms of a future challenge? And so that's why we came up with the recommendations that we did. We did feel with the steep slopes that it's supported by state law, so we didn't think Thousand Friends would struggle with that one. And then the affordable housing one, we feel that that is such a critical issue for McMinnville, and our new expansion plan needs to consider that so we can, so we can ensure that we can build affordable housing in our future. The other, the other elements were mostly overall acreage of land expansion need, and we didn't think in terms of the criticality of McMinnville having some future land supply in the grand scheme of things that it was worth a lengthy court challenge.
I guess part of my problem is with the, you know, the concept of building on any, you know, building lands, building on lands where, you know, we have a 45% chance of failure, so to speak.
Oh, the hazard lands?
Yeah, this seems like, this seems like an unacceptable rate. I think that in, you know, any time that we're, I think, calling the buildable lands when there's that high of a chance of failure for structures and then, you know, the potential of loss of human life that could go with that, I don't, I don't see a, I really struggle with having a meat in the middle of lower density when, you know, we're talking about, we're talking about people's lives, really.
So I get that, so, and we struggle with that too. But when you look at the maps, the high landslide soils, for the most part, except for that stuff that's already in the UGB and the city limits, so that's not, we're not even talking about that through this. The high landslide soils are mostly on the perimeter of the north Fox, north Fox Ridge Road subarea, which is on the periphery of our overall study area. So if you remember, our overall study area will end up being like 2,2,500 acres, and we'll need maybe 1,000 of that or less as part of an expansion. So that could be screened out with the Goal 14 locational factors. Is it meeting city need? We're going to assign it value based on hazards, so it's not the best place to develop. And so we'll assign that as part of the Goal 14 locational factors, and we can do that under the law. But to describe it as unbuildable without a city policy in place that describes it as unbuildable sets a precedent that we're concerned that people might be, might think that that's, that is then the reason to raise the gavel and challenge it. The earthquake soils, the high-risk liquefaction soils, again, are on the periphery of what we call West Old Sheridan Road and on the periphery of the study area. So we would have to, we would have to gobble up a lot of land to get there. And we don't feel that that's, that's going to, in the end, be part of, part of, we think it will get screened out in the Goal 14 locational discussion.
Yeah.
I can't say that for sure, obviously, because we haven't gotten to that, and I don't want to put anything on the record because we have to follow the court process, but just looking at it intuitively.
If I could interject, Heather, Counsel, maybe, you know, if you'll remember back to the last meeting that we had, and we had those criteria, that big matrix of criteria that we were going to apply. You don't apply those criteria to land that are deemed unbuildable. But if you declare them as quote "buildable," then you can screen them for, on those criteria. And there are many of those criteria where those hazard areas would perform poorly. They would be expensive to extend services, they would provide very little housing because of the density restrictions due to the hazard constraints, they would provide, they would perform poorly based on meeting affordable housing needs because that housing, that development there would be very expensive. And when you start comparing them to other buildable areas, they just fall to the bottom of the heap and don't make the, don't make the cut. So the risk there is, I quite agree with you, why don't we do things sensibly and take areas that are not smart to develop on off the table? But I think Heather's point about not having an existing acknowledged policy to fall back on as a basis for saying that land is not buildable means that you're really at risk doing it that way.
Right, yep, and this, I agree with that. That's exactly right.
Remy, does that answer as much of the question as they can?
Yeah, I mean, I'm interested in continued discussion amongst the Council that yes, I think that addresses some of my primary concerns.
What's the timeline for this specific part of the process versus when we could address and create policy around that?
Well, I was just going to say, so the other thing, keep in mind, you can always create a, so we go through this process, we submit it to the state as part of the remand. Nothing prevents the city council from creating policies on how land is developed in your community after we submit that. And so we've done the hazard study, we have that work. In fact, we're going to start introducing it to the Planning Commission tomorrow night in a work session to start working through how, how do we want to develop Goal 7 comprehensive plan policies based on this new data?
Go ahead, Zach.
Because with Remy's question in my end, I was, my gut answer to each of these was more along the lines of the initial direction we gave at the previous meeting was, let's stick to the guidelines given in the previous one and not open any cans of worms because that's our best chance to, and then get this through. But the other ones involve a little bit more change to that and a little more nuanced, and I'm just trying to condense something from the vapor of nuance here. And it seems to me that if we can do that, if we're already opening that can of worms, what else can we put in there and do it responsibly? And if it's just needing to have the discussion and create policy, which should be done anyway, can we, as part of this?
But I guess I would say, so remember when the, when the petitioners appealed the city's 2005 submittal? They appealed it and they lined up a whole laundry list of things they were appealing, assignments of error, right? And I, I think there were three in total, but underneath the three were a bunch of subsets. And so the court reviews each of those individually, they don't review them collectively, they review them individually and decide yes, no, yes, no, yes, no, maybe go back, do it again. And so the, throwing everything, throwing all the pasta on the wall because you think that one piece of pasta is going to open up an appeal process is not necessarily the best strategy.
But whoever's reading it that would want to appeal can take any piece of new information and appeal it if they find it.
One person can appeal this whole program. So, could I talk? Basically, what you're saying is we pretty much don't want to rock the boat except on areas where there is some kind of precedent through the state or these have definitely been found to be unserviceable lands for, something where there's kind of a safe harbor that goes with it. It could be challenged, but it's unlikely. Is that correct, Heather? That's right. Or like the affordable housing discussion, we feel, we feel there's basis in the record to support, to talking about affordable housing. What we would be introducing is whether or not affordable housing can actually be built on like steep slopes. And we have a study from PSU, a neutral body, that says it's very difficult. We'd be introducing that, but we also feel that that's a critical issue for McMinnville. Because if we end up, what's that? Yes, it is.
It's important, too, to remember that we're not saying you can't build affordable housing, we're just saying it's challenging and certain areas, again, that's one of the criteria, they would be, they would rate poorly in that criteria. And then when you add service costs and you add all of the other criteria, hazard, when you add all of the other criteria that we can examine without declaring it unbuildable, those areas rate poorly. And thus, the cost would almost take it out of markability.
Okay, I, just a second, Zach, let me go to Sal just so that he can get his initial thoughts out, and then we can come back and then we'll pick up Zach after Sal. Sal?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to make one sort of general comment, which is that I think the staff did a really good job of picking their battles with this plan. I certainly had some expectation that there would be modifications from the 2003 plan just based on circumstances changing. You know, we saw that with the reserve area in Shugman Farms, for example. So I really appreciate the work. I don't have, I can't think of any of the decision points that you have put forward where I actually disagree with the staff decision or the rational basis that you've given tonight. So on this one, I'm definitely a yes. I think you've really hit a good, a good policy approach for where we're at. I mean, if we had some, a statute at the city level that spoke to the lack of buildability there, I would have probably a different view, but that's not where we're at on this question. So I think we should, you know, I'm definitely in favor of proceeding on most of these points at least.
Okay, we can go back to Zach if you have another question.
On that designation of affordable or not, strictly speaking in the terms of this document and planning, what is, what is the value of getting that label put in there? I mean, I understand the intrinsic value, but strictly speaking in terms of the, in the urban growth UGB proposal, getting that affordable housing label tagged on there provides us what?
It ties your decision for how you examined the urban growth boundary to Goal 10 in a much more direct way with it than without it. Goal 10 is the state's land use planning goal for housing, and it is in Goal 10 that you are obligated to provide needed housing for all identified cohorts and groups that are in the city. Without it, it's, you only have a gross number. There's no, there's no ability to distinguish between lands that are, can provide needs for certain groups that have special needs for housing, say, for example, than other groups. So it's just a gross number. So that, it is really, it really brings into much clearer focus the relationship between the urban growth boundary and your compliance with Goal 10. I think that's how I would characterize it.
In the, remind, sorry, remind me, in the previous document that we're dealing with, what was the state's view of our, what was the status of our Goal 10, a robust, the robustness of our proposal in terms of Goal 10? Is that, do we need to bolster our case? Is that, is that going to help us here? Was that an area that was already under attack or no?
The court never really weighed in on specific findings related to specific goals other than Goal 14, which is how you bring land into the urban growth boundary. So creating, I mean, there's another, there's another one that we'll eventually be talking about, and Heather has already brought a third up today. This intersection of Goal 14 with Goal 7, which is hazards, the intersection of Goal 14 with Goal 10, which is housing, the intersection of Goal 14 with Goal 5, which is natural resources. There's, there's opportunity in evaluating the decision for the urban growth boundary to draw in your obligation as a legislative body to balance those goals. There isn't a supreme goal, it's a balancing act. And so Goal 3, Goal 4, Goal 14, Goal 10, Goal 9, none of them have supremacy. And so this, the opportunity here, Zach, I think, is to introduce some data into your fact base that draws out for your, the decision that you're going to make, that draws reliance on meeting your parallel obligation under Goal 10.
That last description there, your last statement, that helped me kind of come full circle on that. I hear, you know, I think all of us hear that affordable housing, do we want it or not want it? We all, oh yeah, boo yeah, but I think just the way you explained it there, tying it into the official language, super, was super helpful to me. Thank you.
Well, and one question, I mean, isn't from a practical standpoint just not building affordable housing on slopes? I mean, your data just suggested that one benefit of following this is that we won't be trying to build affordable housing in places where it's a lot more expensive to do that. I mean, that, that seems to me the rational basis for the decision, and that, that seems more important to me than, you know, how it would be litigated, I suppose, is that I think this actually creates a path for more affordable housing in the city because we won't be contemplating putting it in places where it's too expensive to build, and we know that home builders won't go there.
Good summary, Sal. So again, we are on the staff recommendation, page 36, and the staff would recommend option two, I think we've talked through that. And so Heather, I think we have a direction there?
Yes, not to change the buildable lands inventory in terms of capacity inside the UGB.
Okay. Now, our next Okay. Now, our next decision point is on page 49. And that was our discussion with affordable housing land needs. And to my knowledge, I didn't see a recommendation there. It was just a discussion. And then we move right into serviceable building lands. So what question, there's a question that says, should McMinnville add affordable housing needs to the record and use it as a criterion for screening land to add to the UGB? And you had pros and cons. Am I stopping at the next point to make a decision?
Yeah. And this is the dialogue you were just having as a body.
And so do you have direction from our discussion?
It sounds like we should move forward with that.
Okay. Our next, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Our next decision point is on page 64. And this is under, under...
The Grand Haven Conservatorial Easement.
Easement. And the recommendation that staff has given us on that would be option number three, prepare a UGB swap after UGB remand response and prior to the URA submittal. This will keep it as a clean and straightforward process. I think we've acknowledged that, but anyone like to go different than what the staff would have recommended us on that? I see none. Our next area is on page 88. And that is...
This is landslides.
Yes. And the recommendation that staff would give us is to look at option number two and proceed with caution, low-density development with mitigation measures, adopt hazardous policy in the future. That went with our discussion that as soon as this remand is adopted, or even during that process, we can look at policy that could address these needs and put it into the code.
Yeah. And hazards are part of the Goal 14 screening criteria, which is our next step.
Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up about creating that type of policy? So, and this is kind of based on some prior conversations we've had where we've had things come before us where we don't have an existing policy in place. And then we've gone back to revisit whether that would be something we could take on, is looking at starting that policy path. And of course, the policy, creating policy isn't as straightforward as us just saying, let's do this now. You know, realistically, based on our, based on your capacity, because it would be under the purview of your department, based on your department's capacity, but also our strategic plan, and just the process of moving policy like that forward, what's a realistic timeframe? How would that work start to fit into our strategic plan? And could you address that?
That is, that is a near-term action in the 2032 Mactown Strategic Plan. And so, and it's got two parts to it. One is adopting the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, which is operational, and then doing a Goal 7 natural hazards work and development policies. So both of those are moving forward right now. The Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan is nearly done. It's been in comment period. And right now, we're just making sure it interfaces well with the state plan at this time. And then, we've already commissioned and received a draft natural hazard study. That's what we're introducing, a planning commission tomorrow night. It has some recommended development policies for the comp plan. We're reviewing those. We want to make sure we're really comfortable with them. But that should come to you here over the next 12 months. It's in our existing work plan, and we're working on it. And it has landslides. So we have an inventory for landslides and earth liquefaction soils. Those are the maps we showed you tonight. That's how we got those maps. Flood planes. It has recommendations on how to explore wetland inventory a little bit further, because that's been a fairly robust dialogue here in McMinnville recently. And wildfire hazards.
And if I'm not mistaken, if we go back to our timeline, the indication is, is that we would be submitting to LCDC our remand by the end of December of this year, which then frees up some capacity for other work as it relates to policy to code, correct, Heather?
Yeah, I would just say our work plan is pretty packed. I don't know how freeing it is. But, because we'd follow right up with the URA, but it's in our work plan right now. I don't believe we could get through a discussion with inventory and comprehensive plan policies in the next two months, though. So that's why we sort of put that on a separate course anyways, because it's not part of this record. But we wanted to make sure you had the information so you can make an informed decision. We have it. We wanted to share it with you and the community. But it is on a path now to come to you as city council.
But it just isn't compatible with the decision tonight, correct?
As far as... Well, it's to that point. I feel like we're playing a board game, right? I mean, we're not living in reality with this remand response, but we're trying to get something through to get some land supply for the city of McMinnville right now. So if we brought it into the remand discussion, it's introducing new policies and findings, which are all challengeable.
So really, what you're suggesting is that we go slow and, you know, keep it low-density development and go along as possible with the plan, and then eventually we will change the policy.
Yeah. And it's not going to be that slow. I think it's going to happen in the next 12 months. And the low-density development, I mean, the hazards will be part of the screening criteria for Goal 14. So they may not even end up in a locational discussion for capacity. I don't know. We'll work through that whole process. We're just, tonight, we just don't feel, we don't feel confident that without existing comp plan policies, we can declare it unbuildable and not be challenged on that.
Well, and I get a little, when I look at paragraph two, that says, look for park land opportunities, scenic views, lookouts, natural open space parks. That plays into this also, because we've got significant plans for parks, and this could be the area that that could take. And it mitigates the concern that we might have if it were buildable land.
Well, especially for that land that's in the existing UGB, yes.
Okay, so again, the staff recommendation on item number four on page 88 is to proceed with caution, option number two. Anyone feel uncomfortable supporting that? Okay, Heather, I think we've got an answer on that particular one. Our next decision point is on page 99. And that would be, as we're talking about earthquakes, on page 99, staff is recommending to us that we look at option two, that we proceed with caution, low-density development with mitigation measures, adopt hazard policy in the future, look for park land opportunities. And again, I think it's much as a discussion that we had under point number four. Any questions of Heather? Do I have anyone that would not be able to support following staff's recommendation of option number two? Heather, I think you have an answer there. That takes us to decision point number six, which I have on page 104. And the staff recommendation on this, and we are dealing with slopes on this particular one, of going with option number five, remove from buildable land inventories per allowance in the state law, which then puts us in line with the recommendation of state law. And there'd probably be no one that would go against what the state would recommend us to do. So anything added to that, Heather?
No, and that's the steep slopes greater than 25% that are in this West Hills One area. It would remove this whole area, but it would be determined by these steep slopes.
Right. Any questions or concerns for Heather on this? Can we support on number six, option number one? Okay, Heather, I think that we have given you direction and good discussion. I think we've been able to solidify what would be the best, given the criteria that we have. And thank the staff for recommendations that are thorough and really make sense, given what we need to be doing as we're trying to get the remanded UGB back to LCDC by the end of December.
Okay. And thank you, Mayor. I want to let you know, Tom stayed up till four working on these maps. We are constantly looking at this stuff and refining it and asking ourselves questions. Is this the best step? How do we bring this forward? So it is a team effort, and everybody's full bore into this right now.
Okay. And DJ, thank you for your input. You are so knowledgeable. And I'll tell you, Spencer, thank you for your legal expertise and being our go-to person at this point, recognizing that Amanda's on the call, and she's gaining from the discussions that we've had also. That takes us now to our second presentation this evening, and a discussion on rental house maintenance program. And this is a discussion that we had a couple of months ago, and talking about code updates when it comes to rental house maintenance. And we've asked staff to come back and update us. I know, you know, we've gone two and a half hours already. Would people like to stand up for maybe four or five minutes and just walk around and then come back? And we started our discussion at 8:30? Or Zach wants to go? Okay, then we'll go ahead and move on. If you need to take a break, feel free to do so. So Heather, I'll turn this over to you. And I know you've got staff that's going to be a part of this discussion also.
Yeah. So Mayor, this is coming from our co-compliance team. So Nick, Miles, and Claudia Martinez are here as well, I think. I didn't even look to see if they, I saw them pop in about an hour ago.
They're both on.
Okay. So, and it's based on a work session we had in April with you to talk about the rental inspection program, which was a program we brought to you based on a request from city council to explore. So again, we're going to PowerPoint through this. It's a lot shorter PowerPoint. And we're here to answer any questions you have. Just to remind you, Claudia has a lot of background in this type of program and experience, because she worked with the Housing Authority for many years. And she's the one who's been doing the research for this. So really appreciate what she's done. And she's going to tag-team this with me. So I am going to share my screen with you again. Okay. So this is, what is commonly called as rental inspection program in the code compliance world. And it is a nationally recognized type of program. So tonight, at our work session, we provided to you in April, a presentation on housing rental inspection programs. And we asked city council at that time if this would be of interest to you for us to pursue further. And you asked us to come back with some more research and for further consideration and direction, after giving us the go-ahead on a couple elements. So I wanted to walk through that. The purpose of a rental inspection program is to really look at health, self-safety, and welfare code violations in and on residential rental properties that are a threat to the occupant's safety and a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. So this really is a service to our residents. Rental inspection programs that address the issue of substandard rental properties, they promote greater compliance with health and safety standards, and they would preserve the quality of McMinnville's neighborhoods and available housing in them. So city council directed staff to bring a code that would adopt the International Property Maintenance Code as a minimum standard of maintenance for residential structures. And we did that. In fact, that becomes effective next week on the 27th. And what that allows is it allows for someone to call code compliance with a complaint based on the rental maintenance program that's in that code. So we've adopted a minimum standard for residences, and now we can implement that. However, that's a complaint basis code. And there was some discussion at that April work session about a proactive rental inspection program that has a database and registration structure. And you asked us to bring back some more information about that. And just to put this in perspective, McMinnville has about 5,000 rental housing units. So in the IPMC today, we have standards that cover about 10 areas, heating, plumbing, security, electrical appliances, smoke detection, structural integrity, weatherproofing, carbon monoxide alarms, and rat. So it is a health and safety code. It's not a, it's not sort of a design standards or CCNRs or anything of that nature. And by adopting that, we've established that minimum standard. And now if a tenant has a problem, they need to work with the landlord to resolve it first. And they have to prove to us they've done that. But then they can, if they can't resolve the issue, they can call code compliance. And the code compliance will conduct an inspection and enforce compliance with the landlord to the minimum standards. And both Claudia and Nick have been, in the last couple of months, training on the IPMC code, and will be taking their tests to certify as inspectors for it here in the next couple of weeks. And the cost for that existing program, which we're calling reactive, the complaint-based program, is we're just folding it into our existing, what we do today. Since it's a complaint basis only, our current code compliance staffing has the capacity to work it and work it through our abatement program that we have in section 2.50 of the code. So we would follow that same process. In terms of proactive versus reactive programs, there's some significant differences. So a proactive program is initiated with permits and licensing to create a database. And a reactive is just complaint basis. In a proactive program, you are doing inspections proactively. And it's either done randomly on an annual basis, or cities adopt a standard where they want to inspect every rental unit in that city within three years, five years, or whatever, and put together a work plan to do so. In a reactive program, we are only inspecting those residences that come in with a complaint, which can be an issue because you have a lot of marginalized populations that do not feel comfortable complaining in the power structure of tenant and landlord. Or there's language barriers, or there's disabilities. There's just, what it does is it creates inequity in terms of tenants being able to utilize the program for their health and safety standards. In a proactive program, there's typically fees involved. Reactive, there isn't. The administration is more in the proactive program. The pros, though, for a proactive program is it is comprehensive. So it's not selective, and it's not just those who feel confident playing in the program, playing it. It's really, we're trying to ensure that this same standard is being achieved citywide. The cons is it's more process. It's, you know, it's a government program. And the cons of a complaint-based program is there is potential for retaliation because someone complained. And that's what established the discussion and the code compliance. In terms of effectiveness, the proactive program's more effective. It protects more tenants, all tenants presumably. And the effectiveness of a reactive program is fairly limited. So wanted to talk to you about what a proactive program looks like. And there are national guides for this. These are programs that are active throughout the United States. There's a healthy, national healthy housing initiative that provides standards for this. So a proactive program, the advantage is, is it does preserve safe and healthy rental housing across the community. And it takes the burden off the tenant in terms of needing to complain. It helps protect the most vulnerable tenants. So those tenants that, where there's language barriers or disabilities that prevent them from complaining. And then it also preserves neighborhood property values. The basic program structure is there's some sort of registration. So you need to be able to create the database to understand where the rental units are. And it requires property owners to register their rental properties or to obtain a certificate or license. So much like our short-term rentals, we have a permitting process, and we've created a database. So much like our short-term rentals, we have a permitting process and we've created a database. This would be similar where we'd want a database of some sort. Then there's periodic inspections. Somehow we're inspecting periodically in terms of quality control across the city. And then there's enforcement. If the property fails the inspection, then we initiate enforcement measures. The types of housing, and we, as a city, can choose, but this is what most communities do, is you're looking at all rentals. So you're not, you're not exempting any rentals. There are some communities that exempt the government-owned rentals. But I will share with you, those are some of the ones we've received complaints about here in McMinnville. So our recommendation is we would look at all rentals, those in multi-unit properties, those that are in single-family homes, and those that are government-owned. The, the inspections are both exterior and interior. And for most communities, they are based on the IPMC code. So most communities adopt that code first and then put this program into place. And these are some sample inspection sheets from the city of Gresham, which has had a program like this in place since 2008. And we're going to use that program as an example and walk you through it as to how it could help McMinnville and how we could set it up here. And then there's interior inspections as well, based on the IPMC code. And they are for health and life safety issues. So these are some example references that are in the code that would be part of the inspection. So we'd be looking at heating facilities, make sure they work so that people are living in some sort of temperate environment. We'd be looking at the water systems, again, making sure they work so that people have access to water for their daily needs. And then looking at things like windows, skylights, and door frames for efficiencies and fire protection systems for life safety issues. The recommendation is you phase in a program for a rental inspection program. And you can phase it in several ways. You can do drive-by exterior inspections first, or you can focus on properties with a history of complaints. Or you can spec the oldest properties in the community first. Or you can divide the city into neighborhoods or quadrants and, and start your inspection process in that regard. And if you recall, we have divided the city into neighborhoods to do neighborhood-based code compliance. Some of the strategies for success is to involve diverse stakeholders in designing the program. So when putting it together, bring in both tenants and landlords to have a discussion about designing it. Provide training for your code enforcement staff. And again, the National Center for Healthy Housing provides a lot of training for this. Provide education, outreach, and ongoing support for landlords and tenants. So this is the, also the opportunity to bring, you know, communications to bear for our rental community, both landlords and tenants about eviction laws in the state and things of that nature. It could be a resource. And then implement complementary programs. So whether that's funding assistance for low-income landlords or public access to code violation information. So, you know, what properties are habitual nuisances in this program, that type of thing, so that both landlords and tenants get some sort of complementary program. Challenges with implementing a rental inspection program, a proactive one, is that you will probably discover uninhabitable and illegal housing units. And then what do you do with that? Because you're displacing people out of shelter and how, how do you move forward? Presumably, we have healthy relationships with our housing providers and are able to transition households if we need to into other housing. And I can tell you right now, as a team, we come across this, this type of discovery already, either while we're doing inspections for building and on properties or in code compliance inspections for other reasons. Excuse me. We'll also, in the process, probably discover tenant-side code, so tenant-side code violations. So if you go into a property for, you know, basic maintenance standards, are we going to come across something else such as hoarding, which is a fairly common one? Rent could potentially increase based on the fee structure. The one we're looking at that we're going to share with you tonight is $55 a year for the fee structure. But those properties that are in the substandard state where the landlord would need to make some investment in the property to bring it up to the standard, he could pass on, he or she could pass on those costs to the market. However, we also believe that, you know, that's a public safety, health issue. And so those investments need to, need to be made. Then it could also, it could also displace marginalized households in terms of increasing the rent. And so we would need to look for funding assistance for low-income landlords. In terms of funding a program, most operate as a full-cost recovery program with low fee structure. So remember, I said there's 5,000 rental units in McMinnville. And so if there was some sort of low annual fee structure for registration or licensing or renewal, it would help pay for the program. And it's run the gamut from $10 per unit in Eugene up to $75 per unit in Beaverton. And we would look at what makes sense here in McMinnville if we move that forward. In Gresham, they have a proactive rental housing inspection program. Claudia has been in discussion with them about it. And so what we wanted to do was share what she learned about their program for you because we thought it would be a good model for a discussion here in McMinnville. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Claudia.
I've had interesting months, learning more about different programs. I've done a lot of research in different cities. And the best that I could, not the best, but the most fitting for our community was Gresham. And Gresham, I know, has helped other communities setting up the program as well. And they had a lot of good ideas. So their program was established in 2007, and it was developed over a year. And it was implemented in 2008. And of course, like I said, it's become a model for other communities. And, and they focus on health hazards, fire and life safety and protections from developments. And they use the IPMC as a basis, minimum standard like we do. And it's a hybrid, so it's compliant and it's proactive as well. The structure of the program, they have a rental licensing program. For that community, it was easier for them to implement this because they already have a business license program. And so with the rental licensing program, they, the staff that's already doing the business licensing were able to help them as well with this. And they use tax assessor's records to identify any non-owner-occupied residents where the owner's addresses differ from the property address. And, and that's how they were able to get the program started, is you started doing mass mailings to anyone that didn't have the same, that had different mailing addresses than the property address and just let them know about the program and what they needed to do. And they inspect random statistical sampling every year, and they also respond to complaints.
Yeah, and their random statistical sampling, so they don't, they don't have a goal of hitting every rental unit in three years or five years. They pick the random statistical sampling for workload issue. But it's allowed them to do quality control checks proactively.
And so during inspection process, they have a list. And that's, you know, similar that we would, of course, establish is a list that would be more like a check-off list and making sure that we're following through the process and everything that meets the criteria is, that everything is meeting the criteria and especially, you know, determine if there's any violations of the property maintenance code. The inspector will complete that checklist, and each unit is inspected as well as the interior and exterior of the building. The inspector works with the property owner and the manager and tenant during the course of the case to resolve any outstanding violations. So in Gresham, when an inspection is completed, the landlord or the manager has to be there during the inspection as well as the tenant. And once the violations are resolved, then the owner and the tenant will receive a notification that the case has been closed. And that's, we are already doing that with code-compliant cases. We send letters that their cases have been closed.
Claudia, can I have a question on that? You know, if you have a household where both family members are working and they're only available after five o'clock, do they give, do they give the opportunity to have night inspections? Or did you get a sense of what Gresham does?
I did not get a sense of that. But if we were to establish something like this, I work for tenants. And Nick and I are always willing to work around to, you know, we're working for our residents here in, in, in the city of McMinnville. So we are more than happy to switch our work hours to...
Accommodate.
To accommodate, to the residents. And like I mentioned, I work for tenants. So, you know, I can meet anyone as early as seven in the morning till, you know, 5:30, 6:00, whatever needs to be done in order to accommodate the resident. So here's their inspection timeline. So their first inspection is, if a violation is found, a third-day notice is issued. Of course, with the exception of fire, life, safety, and rodents, then they have a three- or seven-day notice will be issued. Then a second inspection is done 30 days or sooner, depending on the violations. If the violations are resolved, then the case gets closed. If the violations remain, then another 30-day civil penalty warning is issued. And then it really depends on the exception as well. And a third inspection, another 30 days or sooner, depending on the violations. If the violations are resolved, then the case is closed. And if violations remain, then a civil penalty can be issued. And these are their program statistics. So these are the 10, the 10 top violations for 2018 for compliant and mandatory inspections. As you can see, maintaining services is pretty high up there, along with smoke detectors, electrical, plumbing, restore, handrails, electrical mold, electrical such as cover plates. And I interviewed the rental inspection manager, and I had a few questions. I don't know if you want me to read all of them, or if everyone has a chance, had, had a chance to read it.
Yes, Claudia, I sent, I sent your full interview out to everyone in advance of the meeting. And then the presentation highlights three of the questions.
Okay. So do you want me to go ahead and read them?
Go ahead on the three, Claudia.
Okay, so how was, how has this program helped your residents? The answer is the program has helped tenants as well as rental property owners. Many smaller property owners aren't well-educated on building code and landlord-tenant laws. This program has helped many property owners learn that the requirements ensure compliance with applicable laws. Tenants are obviously assisted because they're able to contact the city if a landlord is unresponsive to their maintenance request. The program works well to ensure safe, safe, habitable housing in Gresham. What are your suggestions, what suggestions would you have to cities looking to adopt the rental inspection code, I'm sorry, rental inspection program code? The property maintenance code has a lot of requirements. I would suggest focusing on the fire health, fire life, safety issues when conducting inspections and not cosmetic issues that are technically in violation of the property maintenance code that will help ensure safe, habitable rentals and also create more buy-in from the property owners' managers because they know inspectors aren't going to cite or find them for scuff paint or something similar to that. Over the years, Gresham has worked on an inspection checklist that focuses on permanent fire life safety issues. The checklist, the checklist can be under, can be found on the checklist. And I think Heather also attached that checklist.
Yeah, it was in the site.
Okay. How is the registration managed? Gresham's business licensing staff manages the registration process. A lot of the work has, was done at the beginning of the program to get rentals registered with the city. Now staff periodically runs a report that shows if a residential owner has a different address from the property. In that case, a letter is generated that asks if the property's a rental. If so, they are instructed to register the rental. What's one thing that you would say that your department has done that has made your program successful? I believe that one of the reasons we've had success with our program is that we strive to maintain a neutral, a neutral between tenants and property owners and landlords. We have found trinity to be important in gaining trust and program buy-in.
So in terms of, we discussed this as a team. And in terms of a recommendation that we have for the city of McMinnville and US City Council is that we work towards developing a program similar to Gresham, a program that's both a hybrid proactive program and a complaint-based program, but with random sampling, because it's not as administratively labor-intensive as a program that has a standard of inspecting every rental unit in three or five years. We think by adding the proactive program, it really helps provide for consistency and transparency. It helps to protect our more marginalized tenants. And we feel that to bring a program on board, that we would need to work with rental property owners and tenants over the next year on the development of the program and that we could bring something with a registration licensing program to bear starting in 2022. So using the complaint-based program and then spending our winter months, so the months between November and February, we have less code compliance cases. So we focus on building up the program. The last two years, we've been working on our codes that we've brought to you as amendments. We typically will bring them to you in April after we've worked through, worked on them through the winter. And we feel, and that's nearly done now. So we feel that we could spend the next two winters working on this program, developing the database, working with the tax assessor's office, so that we can launch something in 2022.
Okay, I, I know that we've had a, a, a brief session on this before. This presentation was very complete from my perspective. I wrote down a number of questions that were, were answered as we went through the presentation. But at this point, let's go ahead and open for discussion among council and see if we can come up with a direction for staff. So anyone, Zach, you want to start us off?
Oh, don't mind if I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, Heather, Claudia, and Nick for the work into this exciting program. I think even if it was the most, let's see, active or passive? Passive program, getting standards in for rental housing is a huge win. And as a professional remodeler of almost 10 years now in the area, I've been through a lot of houses and people buying distressed properties to flip them and do other things. And there have been some people living rental houses that were scary to say the least. And so I think creating this standard is going to be huge. And I've been in some houses that have had an effect on me. So thank you for bringing this, exciting. Couple of questions on specifics. And maybe you touched on this in the beginning work session in April that I missed. But how, how do, how do we govern apartment units? How does, how are apartment complexes addressed in this? You know, is each unit a rental unit in the consideration of, you know, licensing? If that was part of the program or?
Yeah, so the, the way we go, so two things. One, we've already adopted the IPMC through our process that we went through, and it becomes effective August 27th. So our minimum standard has been established. So thank you, council, for that. In terms of, I think your question, counselor, in terms of a multi- In terms of, I think your question, counselor, in terms of multi-unit structures, so it could be duplexes, triplexes, quads or apartment complexes. What we will do is the property owner will need to register with us. Most cities are doing it as a cost per unit. So if it's two hundred units in an apartment complex owned by one property owner, it's a cost per all two hundred individually versus, you know, a property owner who owns two units in a duplex. And the reason for that is when we do the random sampling, we may be sampling five units in the apartment complex on that random year versus one in the duplex. It's just, it's a, and it's a, it's a total of the five thousand, right? And, and proportionality doesn't sort of grace you in any way. So we would have them register all two hundred units. It would go into our database and then we would go from there.
Do the five thousand number that you gave, that includes each apartment unit, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. The, in the complaint-based system, are only the residents of that structure allowed to issue a complaint? Or, yeah, that's my question. Is, are only residents of that unit able to issue complaints?
So we just talked about that this morning. In fact, Nick asked the same thing. You, you and he are thinking along the same lines.
Must be both. Good-looking, smart dudes.
So our interpretation, without talking to Amanda, our city attorney, so I don't want to blindside her, but our interpretation is that anybody can complain about a property not being compliant with our city code. And then we would investigate compliance.
Right, that would, I mean, I haven't heard if it holds muster in the terms of our city attorney, but that would make sense. It's all under code. And if my neighbor's got thirty-five inch grass and I want to call that in, seems like it's kind of the same lines.
Yeah.
Okay. And then how is it, what's the applicability to short-term units? And short-term units as a part of people's existing residences? So like if I have a carriage house, I live in my house permanently and I rent out my carriage house full-time, that would be a unit that I would need to have registered, is that correct?
So, don't know, don't, so we don't, we, we haven't, we haven't put together the details. You're always ahead of us on the detail, Zach. And that would be something that we would want to talk about as a city and talk about with our city counsel, legal counsel, as to how we define short-term rentals. Looking at the, what other communities have done, some have included them and some haven't. So.
I guess in that was also, that was a prominent example. But in that is a whole slew of nuanced, little tiny variations that I guess we'll just, we can just have as we move toward that two thousand twenty-two.
Yeah, so some communities talk about lodging, most don't. But there's the ADUs and all that other stuff too.
Yeah, what I learned in my research is that most communities that have the business licensing, they're already doing inspections on short-term rentals. And the communities that don't have the business licensing and the rental units, they're not required to pay a license fee. They only include rentals like long-term living, not, you know, an Airbnb or short-term rentals.
Okay.
So it's definitely something that we can discuss about.
And last question, the, the other, your, your comparable city, Gresham, had a, had a business license program. Do you see our current makeup of the code enforcement able to onboard this program without a business licensing program? Do you see us moving in that direction to help with this? Or how, how do we, how are we going to augment not having a business license program to establish this licensing program?
So it would be more difficult, but we don't see that as a barrier. One of our SLA modules that we did have the state provide to us was the business licensing module. Because at that time, we were talking about a business license program in the city of McMinnville. In terms of staff capacity, what I can tell you is we've talked as a team. We feel we have the capacity to put this program together. What, in, in terms of administering it full-time over the length of the program, I think that shall evolve in terms of, of whether the existing staff can and cannot do that as the city grows, right? But it's also the fee structure is meant to be a full cost recovery program as well. So we, as we look at the fee structure, that's, we'll have to be balancing all that out.
Right, if it turns out we need a third person or a tech for that, then do you change or do you plan on that? Or, yeah, it'd be an interesting calculus.
Yeah, and we haven't done any of that work. So I don't want anybody to walk away saying that we're going to put this program together and hire another FTE. We honestly haven't done any of that work.
Right, okay. Cool, good work. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. I'll just go down, Wendy, any questions for Claudia, Heather or Nick?
I, I don't have many questions. I thought the information was really good. I really liked the interview. It gave me some different things, some really good perspective on a program that's running. I particularly liked the, the comments about how it helped the landlords as well, especially landlords that own one or two buildings that are, it's not, it's not their primary thing, and how it helps to educate them. And it was considered a positive. I do think we have a fair number of those in our town. We don't have as many of the big, big landlords, but the smaller landlords are very prevalent. We have some big landlords as well. But, so anyway, I'm, I'm in support of the hybrid. My concern was, one, making sure we were working on the side of the landlords as well. And it sounds like a really nice balanced program that works to help everybody. I like, I was also a little bit concerned, concerned about the workload in FTE. And I, I really liked the presentation about how that would be managed to where it would be a, a positive without, you know, adding an FTE or too much workload. So I think it's a great, I'm in support of it. I think it's a great start and I'd like to hear more of the detail as you guys come up with it.
Thank you, Wendy. Let's go to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. Heather, I, I really appreciate the work and Claudia, especially your work. You did a, a great job and we've been talking about this. I think we first talked about this over a year ago in relation to a property here. So what would be the prospects for phasing this in with a complaint-driven process ahead of twenty-two? You know, you bring in the code changes and then make the complaint-driven version of this operative. And then as you have time to develop out the more robust program, is that, is that how you see this rolling out? Or is that an option for rolling it out?
Yeah, so we are in the complaint-driven program as of August twenty-seventh.
For, for rental housing for this code area?
Yeah, so because, for all housing, because we adopted the International Property Maintenance Code. And that's, that's why Nick and Claudia have been training on it for the last couple of months and will be taking their certifications here soon.
So, so right now, a tenant in McMinnville could make a complaint under that code about their landlord to our community relations folks?
Yes, in a week's time.
August twenty-seven. August twenty-seven, thank you. Yeah, I, I think this is really great movement. And I really appreciate the work that staff has put in to make this happen actually more quickly than I expected. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Sal. Let's go to Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question is you mentioned an equity lens, that the two different programs had a different application of, of equity. Could you expand on that a little more and also talk about other ways or other potential ways that an equity lens could be applied here?
Yeah, so, and I haven't read all the studies on the equity issues associated with this type of program, but the National Center for Healthy Housing has, has studies on it. So predatory landlords often prey on marginalized populations, right? And, and so the equity issue is that marginalized populations don't really have an outlet to, to complain without retaliation. And the proactive program, what it does is it's, it's, it's random. So everyone, we're doing quality control checks so that everybody has to be at a certain standard. The other issue is that complaining means you need to have one awareness of what your rights are, what the standards are. You need to feel confident enough to make a complaint. There's language barriers, there's disability barriers. And so there are studies to show that the complaint-based program is not equitable across the board to all tenants because of that. But we could, we could, there are studies on it and we could look at those more.
Okay. Of the IPMC minimum standards that are already applied or that will shortly be applicable for the city, how many of those are also addressed through other code compliance issues? Like the last one being rats, that, that was already, that would have been something that anybody could have called about and, and there would have been a code compliance response.
On the exterior, but yes. So rodents are one, that we already have a code compliance nuisance code for. Fire safety issues are authorized under the Oregon Fire Code, but we don't have, as you heard from the fire marshal, during our chapter fifteen discussion, they have the authority to enter commercial buildings, not residential buildings. So we don't really have an active program of review for that unless invited in. And so that's, that's authorized in that code. And then, you know, some of the, no, I guess I was, I was going to say the building code covers some stuff, but the building code covers structural issues. And the IPMC is, is really about maintenance. From that list you saw of complaints from Gresham, it, it wasn't the buildings falling down. It's the building systems are not being maintained in such a way that they're safe.
And then you mentioned that there was, that you'd already encountered a situation where you're, you were kind of, you, you were, you were at a crossroads or forced with a choice, or maybe not, there wasn't even a choice to be made. Certainly seems like this would fall into that category where you, you found something that was, you deemed uninhabitable and therefore you're dislocating a currently sheltered person or persons. So how did that play out previously? And then could you expand upon how that would play out at this point? If this, this were to go into effect as a proactive program?
Yeah. So I'll talk about what's on the record. So there's discussion on the record from, from city council meetings about people habiting residential structures that don't have utilities connected to them. And so they don't have plumbing, they don't have heat. And there was always discussion about whether they're habitable or not. In this case, they would be considered not habitable. And so either the utilities would need to be connected or the people relocated to another housing unit. We do as a team come across, anecdotally, we come across, we've come across families living in storage units in McMinnville. We've come across families living in tough sheds that you buy at Lowe's with extension cords to them from the primary house. There are, there are families living in very desperate situations right now. And so we, two things have come across, and when we talk about them is, one, do we really have the authority, say you can't live there in storage units? Yes, because it's not allowed. They're usually in zones that we don't allow that. The tough sheds, something else entirely and we look at the building codes. But then we also look at, you know, we don't want to displace someone without getting other shelter for them. And so it would be connecting them with other resources to help them find shelter. Appropriate, habitable shelter at a minimum standard.
And what happens if that is, if that cannot be found?
I don't know, that's what we're going to have to decide as we work through this program. Obviously, the people who are living in those desperate situations aren't going to complain because it's shelter for them, right? So we don't get complaints, we come across those. And what we would need to do as one of the consequences of a proactive program that I shared with you in the presentation is finding those because you're now in this quality control check. And what do you do with them? And I think that's the, one of the dialogues we need to have over the next year and how we set up programs for them.
Yeah, and I think one of my suggestions, counselor, would be to, of course, reach out and try to make connections with nonprofits that assist low-income individuals or, you know, individuals that are facing homelessness and try to partner with them. And like I mentioned before, you know, one of my, one of our ideas is perhaps get a committee that helps out, set the rules for this program. And we can try to involve either the Housing Authority or YCAP, you know, to help with, with these type of questions and scenarios as well. And at long-term, partner with them and have some resources as special vouchers just for, when, at my time with the Housing Authority, I know they worked with different agencies like the Yanhill County Mental Health Clinic where they had a few vouchers set up side just for them. And so if we could partner with them and, you know, either the Housing Authority, YCAP could set special type of vouchers just for, you know, the type of situations where we have to ask someone to move out because we're dealing with a inhabitable unit. That would be, you know, one, something that we could explore.
Yeah, I thank you. I, yes, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. But also, you know, I, I think that you're aware, as, as are many of us, that just because there's a housing voucher doesn't mean that there's available housing.
Right, right. So what we would need to do, I brought up the inspection timeline. So this program has a much longer timeframe for investigation, identification, non-compliance and coming into compliance than our nuisance program. And as we think about how we put this together, we could write a code that, we could think about that in terms of displacement and what that means and timeframe for it.
What's the, did Gresham have a measurable impact on affordable housing? Thinking of your example of a two hundred unit, even though that's not so applicable here, but, but a, a, an apartment complex that has a large number of units and they're each treated individually. And you can only assume that at some point that cost gets passed along. Is it a one-time cost to those business owners or, refresh me on that?
So in terms of the fee structure?
Yeah.
So the fee structure is per unit. So whether it's aggregate in a larger complex or individual, presumably the fee passed on to the tenant should be per unit.
Per year?
Yeah. And then the question is whether, so some communities have an initial registration fee to get them in the database and then a renewal fee that's different, so lesser. And again, we haven't done that type of analysis. And then some communities also have a sliding scale for those who have a larger amount of units versus those who have two, right, two versus two hundred. And so we would have discussions like, about that with this committee that we put together that helps us develop the program for what's equity, what's equitable and transparent and can be supported.
Okay, and then looking at that screen that you're showing us right now, how many of those cities also have business licenses? Whereas we, we had Gresham as the example, so we know they do.
I bet most of them do because it's very rare not to have a business license. But I don't, I don't know for sure. We, I didn't double-check that.
And then what's the, what would be the process this would go through if we wanted to move, if, if we wanted to move forward with a proactive program? What would be the process from here on out?
So like I described in the staff recommendation, we would spend the next two winters developing the program in. developing the program in concert with a committee of landlords and tenants and our legal counsel. Um, and bring different decision-making milestones to you as counsel as we develop the program and adopt a code for it. Um, and then we would also at the same time be putting the infrastructure in place to do, to put, to gather the database, so for instance, how Claudia described Gresham's implementation program when they used the assessor's da- database to screen properties that where the property owner's address was, the mailing address was different than the property owner's address. And sending out a mailing to them to let them know in advance of the program and the need to register, we would do something like that. And we have done, as a team in the planning department, we've done similar lifts on a much smaller scale. But s- but similar lifts in terms of program structure with the short-term rental units, which are now all in a permitting and a renewal process and a database that we have, and we do code enforcement on that twice a year to ensure that everyone's participating. So we would use those systems we already have in place and just scale them up.
Now, what point would there be opportunities for public uh, comment?
And that's up to you as city council, right, so this would come to you, this would need a code to implement, so we come to you as um, amendments into the McMinnville City Code. Um, so you've got public hearings at that level, we could um, have public forums, we, our intention is to be in dialogue and discussion with property managers and landlords and trying to get the information out to tenants as much as possible as well.
And what do we know about, uh, we'll just say Gresham, but other municipalities and how they've interacted with the business community in terms of having upfront dialogue, I know we saw the the response from the city of Gresham was that it's helped business owners, but has there, um, how could we get feedback from um, those affected, both, both business owners and renters alike?
Um, we could do that work, so part of our process could be, you know, when we, when we hit into November and have capacity and start developing the program, we could do a best practices interview with other communities to find out what's working, what's not working. We could do, um, we could also talk to them about how are you engaging with your landlord-tenant community and, and what types of responses are you getting from them? We haven't done any of that work, because we didn't have direction to move this forward, so we just were bringing to you what the structure would look like, and if you want us to go further into due diligence, we're happy to do so.
Okay, thank you. Uh, what's your um, take on the pulse of the, the need for a program like this in, in the city of McMinnville?
Um, I agree with SAC, um, or Counselor Gary, where I have also seen what I would consider inhabitable structures in this community. I think it's needed.
And then, um, this is kind of backtracking in terms of most of my line of thinking regarding this, but I, I missed something earlier and I just want to go back and touch upon it, maybe Claudia, you can help me with this. Um, because it kind of uh, corresponds to what you were saying earlier with getting people lined up with housing vouchers, et cetera, one of the things that came up was a mention of hoarding. Um, and of course, um, uh, uh, that's reflective of um, uh, mental health and access to mental health services. Um, and uh, and, and we have, as a city, we have no control over access to mental health services, not that we can't collaborate with the county or not that we don't collaborate with the county, but um, in how, how do you have code here that has the ability to be flexible? If say what you're, you're not necessarily dealing with a, a landlord uh, issue, but actually a a, a tenant issue and, and it's not an issue that the landlord can resolve. Like in the case of if, if they had a tenant who was hoarding, if their only option became to evict them. Um, based on their, uh, you know, ultimately what would be based on their mental health status, which it's uh...
So the, the eviction thing we would have to work through with legal counsel because there, that's fairly prescriptive in Oregon state law. In terms of other code violations, which would be considered nuisances, uh, which hoarding, hoarding is. Um, we would, we would walk through that process, which we already have, and, and Nick and Claudia deal with hoarding issues today. Um, and what they do is, uh, Nick and Claudia both have the opportunity to use discretion to enter into co-compliance plans with anybody who's in non-compliance and they're in dialogue with them and talking about how are we going to resolve this, how do we get you help, you know, and put together a plan for it, and they're Nick and Claudia are really good at reaching out to partners, um, to bring the right resources to the table.
Yeah, and just with any normal code compliance um, violation, that's what Nick and I do. You know, depending on the situation, if it's an elderly resident that's not able, let's say, to get their lawn mowed. Um, then, you know, we try to work with them and try to use our discretion uh, with timelines as well instead of finding, we really try to work um, with, with the resident to get into voluntary compliance. Um, I know that Nick had a situation where um, there was a resident that was hoarding. Um, and um, you know, he worked diligently with the um, with the mental health counselor um, and tried to get her help, um, and worked through the compliance plan. Um, and he used his own discretion to work with them and family members, um, and um, other, you know, their mental health counselor as well, so we are already doing that. It just, it's case-by-case basis, um, you know, depending on the situation of the resident.
Yeah, and sometimes in those situations, it is, it, it does at least appear to be helpful for the residents and for the case managers to have someone from the city become involved, it, it kind of elevates it to a level that, that requires a little more attention than it may have been getting previously. And that's, I think that's been Claudia and I's experience when we do get to um, engage in those situations. Um, just kind of stress that, you know, we want to make sure that the living situations are safe and that we can set up a reasonable timeline to get things into compliance if they're not.
All right, that's all the questions I have for now, thank you very much.
Thank you, Remy, for uh, really good questions, uh, let's go up to Kelly.
Well, I think there's been a lot of good questions tonight and good answers. I want to thank Claudia and Nick and Heather for putting all this together, I think it's been very informative, I particularly interested in the equity issues and I can certainly see from Remy's comments about uh, the follow-up and the concern of putting people out when they have some form of shelter. And my own experience with Habitat for Humanity years ago was that people live in storage units, garages, you name it, it's kind of scary where some people live, but that's what they have. So I think this is good, I think uh, it's kind of paced with the capacity of the city at this point in time. And I'd like to see it go forward.
Thank you, Kelly, uh, just a couple of comments on my part.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, Sal?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, I did have one question before you wrap up, if I could, uh, that I neglected to ask. Regarding the uh, the passive complaint-driven process that's going to be started in the next week, Heather. Uh, do you think that there's a need in our code to add in a piece um, to prohibit, specifically prohibit retaliation for tenants that bring forward a complaint?
I think that's definitely something that um, I should explore with Amanda and see if that's needed, yeah.
Yeah, if that, if that's something that's needed, I, I, I think just because that program is getting implemented pretty soon um, that, that's something we should probably expedite uh, just to protect people so that they can feel comfortable to bring a complaint forward.
Yeah, I'm for Sal, um, the city of Gresham actually has asked um, some similar to anti-retaliation, and I can get more information about um, that um, in the next week.
Awesome, thank you Claudia and Heather.
Mr. Mayor, may I as well have one more?
Okay.
Uh, I just want to kind of point out because of the bits of conversations that came up about um, alternate living spaces, I, I just kind of want to separate that out from this conversation in the sense that um, there, this program doesn't address uh, those types of alternate uh, living situations. Doesn't mean that they uh, uh, not, I'm not, I'm not saying that they don't exist clearly, they do, um, uh, but um, uh, a, a rental program like this is not going to create an inspection process for storage units or tough sheds or garages, those are two very separate issues.
Out of there being charged rent for them.
Yeah, or, yes, that's true, or you're, um, someone's, someone is complaining about them.
Okay. Any other questions, Remy?
No, sir.
Okay, um, just in conclusion this evening, just some thoughts that I have. I am, um, I feel good as we talk about this hybrid, hybrid approach where we're looking at reactive, moving towards a proactive uh, approach over a two-year period. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling good that we would have input from owners, input from renters and then possibly having a public uh, a, a public discussion on this that would bring citizens in. Um, I also am very cognizant of the affordability of housing in McMinnville. It's been one of our top issues and we don't have solutions for that. Thus, I think this protects and gives equity uh, to those that are found in the most vulnerable of situations. Uh, lastly, in that we're going to implement this over a two-year period, I did have a concern about COVID and the cost. And, you know, we're, we, we don't know what it's going to be like in three, four, five months to a year if COVID is still around and people not able to pay rent and all of those types of things, but with our implementation over a two-year period, I think we'll be working through those types of things. Um, so I, I think as I listen to the discussion and the nod is that I think we want to move forward, Heather, with uh, uh, getting more parameters and having uh, more discussion, but giving you the go-ahead to move forward on this is the sense that I get from the council. Any member of the council uh, opposed to that approach? And then Heather, do you need more specifics than just to move forward?
No, we, we will continue to move forward and structure something and um, if we have decision-making milestones, we'll come back to you and work session with that.
Well, I, as has been said, said a number of times this evening, um, Claudia, thank you for your due diligence and reaching out to uh, Gresham and those that have uh, have shared uh, the, the successes of their program and, and seeing some of the other cities, they're not all large cities because there's some that were smaller than ours. Um, Nick, uh, thank you for your participation and, and Heather, just to the whole staff, because I know you know, these types of things involve everyone as you're shuffling responsibilities around and uh, you've got two major things on the plate tonight with the UGB and then uh, preparing for this and then all of the other work that's going on beyond that. So I, I'm gonna, um, uh, Jeff, do you have any input as we close our discussion this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your attention tonight, though.
Well, thank you, everyone, it has been a three-and-a-half hour uh, uh, fun evening, seeing faces and uh, being able to uh, work on issues that are so critical to this community, so uh, with that, I'm going to conclude our work session this evening, as always, be safe, uh, uh, wear your mask, wash your hands and socially distance as we're out and about. And then those that are on our call listening in, again, I want to welcome you and thank you for being a part of listening to our discussion tonight, so thank you all and have a good evening.
Thank you, good night.